All right, very well. Thank you for all coming for tonight. For our Wayham Zoning Board of Appeal for tonight's agenda. And it is November 8, 2023. And we are at the Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wayham, Mass., 02571. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Before I go forward, our regular member, Mr. Jake Morrison, no longer with us. Moved out of state. That mandates that he leaves the board, which he did. And our associate member, Mr. Troy Larson, became our permanent member. Whoever's watching, we're looking for associate members. Mr. Conti, maybe? You come back? So, it'd be good. So, welcome, Troy. Welcome again, I guess.
Thank you.
All right. So, we do have five board members. And I'll make a roll call. My far right, Mr. Troy Larson. Ms. Veronica DeBeneese, our clerk, Ms. Jim Akabachi. My left, also member, Richard Semple. Myself, the chair, Nazir Al Qalasi. Also present, our building commissioner, Mr. Paul Turner, and assistant town planner, Ms. Sonia Raposo. I'll start with the minutes for 10:25, 23.
I've reviewed them. They're fine. I make a motion to approve as presented. Second?
Okay, I get the motion to approve the minutes for 10:25, 23. Motion by Jim, second by Rich. All in favor say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
And Rich?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye. Hecarys. Yes.
TJP.
All done.
All right. We have 49-21, TJP Realty LLC. An unsubstantial modification request, 14 over Jordan Road. Counselor, go ahead.
Attorney Julian Morton, 184 Main Street. To make sure everyone has everything. We're in front of you today. This was 14 over Jordan. If you recall, people who have been on the board, 12, 14, 16, these were lots over on over Jordan Road that were dilapidated cottages. My client has been redeveloping that area. Most recently, he had, he has paved the whole road, if you've been down there. So, these were all approved. And we have, what we're seeking essentially, I know the engineer said insubstantial, but it's major versus minor, right? So, we're looking to have a minor modification on 14. And it's just a two-foot closer because of a cantilever coming over the build. So, this is something that we're looking, and we're requesting that this is minor. It doesn't change any of the footprint. So, that's why we're here.
Okay.
Sure, go ahead.
So, the foundation stays the same. It's just the second story is cantilevering out two more feet?
Yeah, yeah. And it's closer to over Jordan now. He owns across the street, as well as the two abutting over there. Remember, this is kind of like the family.
I've been down there.
Family compound. So, in order to have, you know, the house for, I don't know what relative is gonna be in there, but this was something that we're looking to have. So, we applied for the building permit, but of course, it's a change since the variance. So, that's why we come in front of your board.
So, we're two feet closer on the second floor to the road. Did we grant a variance for where it is?
This was, no, I don't recall. It was...
So, it still meets the front setbacks. It's just that it's two feet closer?
No. So, the existing front setback from the previous house was 25. And then our approved plans were 26, and now we're going 24. So, we're kind of...
So, you're 24 feet from the street?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it's a, it's a two-foot.
Yeah, I get it. Okay.
What's the setback there?
Do you see the big plan?
Quiet. Now, what's the zoning setback? What's the setback by zoning? What's the, what's the, what zone is it? 130, 60?
Our 130.
Our 130?
Yeah.
50 feet. 50 or 60?
But these were pre-existing, non-conforming, small cottages, if you recall. He tore two down, but left one. So, this was actually the one that was left. So, right now, it has the, I think it has the pylons down.
Just give me a minute.
It has the, yep.
It's an R60, not a 130. Who said 130?
Oh, sorry. R60. That's, that's my district, too.
That's good. That's less setback.
Yeah, sorry. R60. I know my own district.
100, yeah.
How much?
60.
It's still 60?
Our 130 is 50.
The front setback?
Yes. Our 130 is 50. All right, okay. So, you think it's minor?
I'm sorry?
You think it's minor modification, or you like it to be minor?
I believe it's a minor modification for have him go through the whole variance process again, which I think would be overly burdensome for two feet.
I understand. That's what everybody does. It is what it is, for me, anyway. Rich, what do you think?
I'm fine with it.
Fine with what? With her?
The way, way...
Minor?
With her to be a minor.
Okay. Troy?
I'm fine with a minor.
Veronica?
Minor's fine. Yep, I agree.
Minor.
I can't vote for a minor personally, but if we vote, I guess you gotta, I don't see how it's minor. It's a variance, but if you have the whole board, the whole board. So, before we go forward, anything you wanna add?
Nope.
Okay, what's the wishes of the board?
Well, I'd like to clarify something. So, the original was, if I'm correct in reading this, because I wasn't really following you with the numbers. I got a little confused when you went 25, 26, 24.
12, 14, and 16. And two of them were variances, because he tore the house down. 14 actually was a special permit.
Okay, so, in terms of the setback, because Mr. Al Qalasi is saying that it is a, considered a variance, what you're trying, oh, sorry about that. I just put it on repeat. I don't want it to repeat. So, originally existing was 25 feet from the road?
Mm-hmm.
And then, when you had the permit, it was 24?
Yep.
And now it's 26?
Yep.
Was it ever conforming?
No. If you look at the, if you have in your packets, the, the special permit decision, actually, it says that the, that the commissioner noted the proposed dwelling does not comply with the front setback requirement. So, the actual special permit that we had was on this. So, that's why, it's not like a new nonconformity.
So, it wouldn't, in my mind, I just want, because I want to make sure that we're not saying a minor modification is a variance. Because I feel like this would be a special permit situation, and I do feel like it's not done to rental. So, I just wanted to clear that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. That being said, that's good. That being said, so...
So, I make a motion to treat it as a minor modification and grant approval for the additional two feet.
Okay, we have a motion by Jim to grant as a minor and grant two feet to have second?
Second?
Second by Troy. All in favor say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And me, denied. Hecarys. Thank you.
So, it's 4, 1, 0.
Okay, just give us...
Continue public is McGowan is coming up next.
All right, continue public hearing, 21-23 Angela McKeown on 386 Main Street.
No, I didn't sit in my normal seat. I don't know why I didn't do that. Scoot over. I know, it's not my normal, normal jam. Did the board get... Mine?
Whatever you provide.
You printed it. Okay.
Not the memorandum.
Not the memorandum, okay. All right.
Do you have something to give us, and I have something to hand out? Is that correct on this one, or...
Yeah, let's check. I know that there's stuff that... Revised plans, as well as I have a memorandum that should have been circulated to you via email. But I also printed it, so you guys can go through it. Do you wanna... Yeah, I don't think they can use it.
Couple of these, one for you, one for him.
Thank you.
One for myself. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, public hearing still open. Name and address, please.
Attorney Julian Morton, 184 Main Street, representing the applicant.
Sam I. Malle, J.C. Engineering.
And if I may, I think I'd like to start tonight. Talking about kind of separating the two different things that are before you. We have this variance, and we have the special permit review. I think the simpler one is gonna be the site plan review. So, I would like Sam to take it from here. So, I think there's, we're at pretty much a good point with Phil. Correct me if I'm wrong, but...
Before, before we go any further, did you work out the issue of the right-of-way of the attorney?
That's, so that's on the second issue, and I know he's here, too. So, I'd rather, I mean, if you want to start with that, we'll start with that.
I mean, did you sort it out?
We didn't come to any sort of agreement. I think the abutters had their position. That's why I wanted to provide you with some case law about what I believe is our rights to our property. One of the things that the engineer wanted to have evidence of, you know, our, our ability to improve this right-of-way. So, I wanted to give you that information, as well as all the statutory requirements of why this is a variance, too. So, that's with the memorandum. If you want to start with that and go that route, that's fine.
I would say let's start with them.
Want to start with that?
Don't you think? I mean, there's no sense going forward if there's a major issue. Because the opponent here, the attorney...
Is, is the overburdening a zoning issue, or is that a legal issue between the, is that a civil issue between the parties? Is that us, or is that...
Can't get, we can't grant a permit if they don't have the right to use that right-of-way.
Well, we can grant a permit, but they may not have the right to go in there and use it. We can give them the right to build it, but they may not be able to drive in there. I don't think...
And you're dragging us to court as well, saying why you give them the permit. You know.
So, let's start with that one, because I think that this memorandum will clear stuff up.
What's the judge gonna say? Well, you know, you know, and you still give it to them.
You don't know what the judge is gonna say. You don't know what the judge is gonna say, but I'm happy to go through this issue first, because I'm focused. I'll, I'll get it. Don't worry. All right, so, standard for approval of the use variance. So, I went through in this memorandum our standard of why this meets the variance threshold. I'm gonna start, though, with the second item that I went to about our right to have access to be able to go to this property and use the right-of-way, make the improvements. So, if you go to number two, which is on page three, is evidence of us and documentation of us be able to use the existing driveway. So, I, full transparency, gave you the title abstract and information from my title examiner, which shows the ownership of the T. And the ownership is by the two abutters, as well as it is in an estate of Ed Love. So, he has passed away. We reached, we were able to, to kind of track the whole situation down. That's on us to clear that title issue for the one-third of that parcel. The ownership isn't, in my opinion, the relevance here. It's the, our rights to have access to that back lot. So, what I did was is underlined in our deed, our right-of-way. So, at the bottom there, you see our parcel. We have a right-of-way together with the use in common, with the others having a like right-of-way of 20 feet. So, that's in our deed. Okay? The others, the other two abutters who are in opposition have this, you know, one undivided, one-third part of the land in, in the T-shaped parcel. So, they have, I guess, a one-third, one-third ownership. And this other one-third, our opinion is actually, it should have been, there was a foreclosure, and it should have been added to our deed. So, but that's on us to be able to get that one-third. Doesn't negate our ability to use the easement and to use a right-of-way. So, what I'm proposing to you is that our proposed right-of-way and the purpose of the right-of-way, we're not frustrating the purpose. The, the law is that you're not able to grant something that's gonna frustrate the purpose of this actual easement. And the purpose was, it's right there. It's to, to get to the bump homestead and its various subdivisions. That's written in, in the right-of-way. I provided case law that talks about when you would, like, what the courts have said is burdening and frustrating the purpose of the easement. I mean, if we were building, I don't know, something that's like a huge commercial use, that's clearly not what this is intended, is for residential. Okay? And then, so there's some case law there. And our second...
Excuse me, sorry.
And our second point is going to this overburdening issue. You know, it's not something that, that you, you can have your own determination about, but the courts have talked about overburdening the easement. And in our opinion, this is, this is a reasonable use. So, we're not over, overburdening the easement. It's clear that in, I mean, this is an old easement, a right-of-way. That doesn't say specific, how many units can be back there. And we are really trying to use, it's, it's a general terms that we have a right to get back there. Clearly, this property is zoned in the village to have multiple units there. We see that on Main Street, on High Street, that multiple units are going in, many multifamilies. And it's important to know that if we're unable to use this, then it's hindering our rights as well. Talking about the issues that the opposition may have, our bylaw talks about when we're looking at variances, you know, is this gonna be substantially detrimental to the public good? It actually doesn't say, like, to the direct abutters. So, in our opinion, we believe this is a better use for the property. We've pared it down a lot. When we go into the first issue of, does this meet the threshold of the variance? Believe it does. We, we went through the topography of how much that grade goes up. We tried to go from Main Street. Sam did a great job trying to, trying to work that route. It's not, it's not feasible. You know, you saw it, and, and it's a hazard. So, it's actually better for the town not coming from Main Street. Now, the opposition was okay with us, okay with the project, if we came from, if we came from Main Street. But that's not better for the town, and I know a few members had problems with that as well. What about people coming right there by that stop sign, or people coming out of the plaza? So, we went back to High Street. You know, the question is, yes, if this is approved, they can, they appeal. If this is denied, we can also appeal. So, you know, your determination isn't to, to be the judge and the jury right now on it. But is this really frustrating the use of the, of the actual easement of record? I don't believe so.
If it's, if I may, counsel, if it's not our job to be the judge or jury, what's our job?
Well, to see if it's... To see if it abides by the zoning bylaws and the intent, and the intent of our bylaws. This doesn't notify it.
Do you think our job to protect 21, 22,000 resident from, from maybe a losing case in court, maybe winning?
Either route, it could go.
Right, I'm sure. But don't you, but for you to say it's not our job, of course, it's our job. That's what we're here for. There's all due respect.
No, I meant it not on the legal issues, right?
Yeah, but you, you bring a memorandum that's drafted today. There's a title abstract, which I'm sure most of us don't understand the title abstract style. I mean, we could read it, but we don't understand it. You narrowed down four pages, and it just got handed to us. It was drafted today. So, and quite frankly, I can't act on this. This is too much of illegal words for us, for me, anyway.
Yeah, perhaps for today.
Maybe the board, they agree with you. That's perfectly fine with me. And from the beginning, personally, I didn't have a problem with the variance or the special permit, unless the other issue with the neighbors arose. Otherwise, we don't have a problem. I don't have a problem. I don't know the board. But for us to ignore this matter, it'd be, it'd be ignorant, on our part, to ignore this matter. And personally, just to grant you a permit, and there is a real claim that there's a problem there. But then again, we're gonna, I'm gonna see what the opponent says, the attorney opponent say. Maybe he's okay with it. We'll see what happens. We just jump, that's why I wanted to hear from him before we start arguing the matter.
That's fine.
You know, but before, and we go forward, let's see how the board feels. Troy?
I'm kind of on the same page as you.
Veronica?
I'm not on the same page as you in terms of determining whether or not it will fly. I feel like that is the court's decision, and this is a, this may be a case that goes to the courts. And I think we need to stick to the zoning that's before us, not whether or not that easement is legally accessible by the applicant for what he wants to do.
Jimmy?
I'm kind, I think Veronica and I are somewhat on the same vein. I, I think we, yeah. I think our task is to look at the parcel and the, and the zoning and the use of the parcel. And if we were talking about granting a variance on frontage or, or setback or something, I'd say, yeah, but what we're looking at here in this access is title and who owns rights. And I don't think that's zoning as much as it's rights of use. So, I think we should make our decisions based on what fits on the actual parcel that's before us and let the abutters and the parcel owner fight it out with their lawyers or with a judge as to whether or not they have the right to use that way in and out. That's my feeling.
You're fine. Richard?
I agree with Mr. Akabachi.
And I, I do have one other question, if I might, because I understand what you're saying in terms of wanting to keep the town out of litigation. And so, how would they pull us into litigation when it has nothing to do with what we'd be voting on? How would the courts pull us into that? I don't think that, how could they?
They could go litigation either way, whether, whether we say yes or no. But I have a hard problem if the opponent attorney has a very legit case and clear that we're overburdening the easement. I have a hard problem saying yes, and well, we're sad, and it was proven. We'll see what happens. Maybe he doesn't have a case.
I totally understand that there might be a question. However, it, I don't know how the courts would call a zoning board into just to decide on an easement, because it has nothing to do with us.
We're not deciding on the easement.
But we're making our determination based on whether or not we think there's an easement. And that's, there's, you know what I mean?
Yeah, look, that's, that's why it's your opinion, it's mine.
If I may through the chair, so, you know, what you're voting on is, is the variance. Does it meet the threshold within your bylaw in 40, in the standard with 40A? So, does it have the topography? Is it gonna be, is it against our bylaws? All, all those factors that you normally have, as well as this special permit site plan review?
I totally agree with you. I don't have a problem with that. It meets all the thresholds for this. I'm, I'm not arguing this matter. Let's go to the public.
How about if we make any decision we make, subject to the applicant and the opposing abutters come into a final resolution? I mean, I, I kind of doubt they're gonna build three-two-family structures until they know for sure they can drive in and out of there to get to them. So, we could, we could get up, pass, pass up out of it.
Well, either you're gonna grant it or not. I mean, they're gonna fight it out. They fight it out. Let's hear from the public. Anyone here in favor of this matter? I hear none. Against? The counselor for the matters here? Can you come forward, counsel? Name and address, please.
My name is Attorney Mark Duchesne. Office is at 115 Orchard Street in New Bedford, Mass. Which issue would you like me to address?
The easement. Did you have to hash that out with the attorney? And what'd you come up with?
We, we, we did, in fact, have a conversation.
Okay.
And I advised her that my title examination indicated that the Robinsons, to the south, had a one-third ownership interest in the T-shaped lot.
Right.
The Reed Irrevocable Trust has a one-third interest. And the remaining one-third interest resides in Edison Love and his brother. This property was part of the Toby Estate. And at one point in time, Toby, in fact, had the bump homestead, and they subdivided two lots out to the side, the Reed and the Robinson property. So that the back lot was not landlocked. They had a right to pass and repass. I'm not denying they have a right to pass and repass. I, too, take some exception to the fact that it was said that this was neglected in the foreclosure deed. It was not neglected in the foreclosure deed. The rights of way came out at two separate distinct times, early and then in the 1950s. And in the 1950s, it, it was never conveyed, it was never conveyed out to the, to the owners of the bump homestead lot. And it doesn't carry forward. It still resides in the estate. The people are up in Maine. The person is 95 years old, who has the interest. I did my homework also. So, that's the one issue. We have an ownership interest on both sides of the road. There's two-thirds ownership interest. I can only speak for the Reeds. Yes, we believe that, we know they have a, a right-of-way. The issue of the right-of-way is, can they make use of it? Yes, they can make use in accordance with the way that the land was previously used. And the land was previously used as a homestead farm, and then it was converted into a multifamily. I saw in my sister's thing, which I take a little umbrage when we talked, I was told I was gonna get everything in advance, and I didn't get it in advance. But that's, that's an aside. There, there is a right-of-way. This right-of-way is clearly gonna be overburdened. It was for a farm homestead, a homestead house. As she says in her thing, they want to restore an antique farmhouse. Well, you can't have it each and every other way. You know, there is a right-of-way. Yeah, there's a right-of-way. Our discussions resolved around, when I said, no, we couldn't make consensus, it was, well, we'll buy your land, sell us your land. Why would we do that? So, yes, we, we do have, we're at loggerheads. It would probably be an issue that would be, if I hear what you, what you said, that, and I'm paraphrasing, there's no problem with this variance or the special permit, everything would be mashed together in an appeal to the land court.
I understand that.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll address the issues of, when my sister gets into going through the standards for the variances and special permit, I'll address it at that time also, our, our position on that.
Yeah, I mean, you have the right to be heard on this, you know. I know how the board feel about the very special permit, but personally, I have a problem with the easement. Okay, once we get to that point, I guess we'll, we'll call you up for the variance, or you want to speak about it now, and the special permit?
I, I'll let my sister make her presentation, and then I'll, I'll speak in opposition to it.
Yeah, I think it's gonna take some time, because I want to get everything on record. So, if he wants to go have a seat, you know, so I can get everything on record, just in case we need that.
If you don't mind, counsel, before we go forward, I just want, just a comment. You could go ahead. Sorry. Thank you, counsel. What, how you make out on that comment? Troy, what do you think?
On the easement?
Yeah.
I kind of, I kind of see both sides.
Yeah.
I, I can't, I don't know. I suppose it would be overburdening if we were talking about a farmhouse and a single-family home. But it's been operated as a multifamily how long now?
For a long time.
If I may through the chair, I'd never said farmhouse. This was a blight. This was actually a boarding house with, and I know the assessor had said it only had six units. There were, well, I'm sorry, four units. According to my client, there were three on the first level, two on the second. And then, I mean, it was a boarding house. It was, and then it condemned. And then it was a hazard where homeless people were. So, you know, buying it at auction, it's not this farmhouse.
It's been a fairly long time.
Okay, yeah. So, I mean, I mean, do we, do we go by when it was issued or when it was instituted, about that timeframe, as to the way that we lived at that time? Or do we go by current time?
That's a question you need to ask the town council for this, but I personally, the way I look at it, if I give you an easement for four units...
Right.
If that's what the other council claims, now you're going to put two, six, you need my permission. You are welcome to use the four as much, as long as you want, but doing six or seven or eight or even five, you're going to need my permission. This is how I see it, but then again, maybe I'm wrong.
If I may?
Yeah.
So the easement was actually given to the two by this homestead. So this is the dominant estate, okay? Regardless of the ownership, it's a general easement given out, so they have access to their, to their driveways. It's not, we're not going from something in the 1800s versus now, we're in the village district where there are many multi-units, so...
But I don't, I'm not arguing that matter.
Yeah, I mean, that's what's in memoriam. I gave you case law that talks about it. It's a reasonable use. It's a general right of way. It doesn't have restrictions. He can only stick to what it is. And I, I know you're very set on the easement, but I, I think it's important, we can go through the variance standard, and if it meets that, I mean, it's, it's up to the board to make the determination.
Let me give a chance for the rest of the board to answer that. Veronica?
I think, what I had stated last time, I still feel the same, and that's kind of what we're talking about, is what it was when it originated. He's, the gentleman that just spoke, stated that it was a farmhouse. It's no longer a farmhouse. Time has changed. It's become a multi-residence, and zoning has changed for every lot that is affected by this easement. And the intended use was for residential and for access to those lots. So I don't know how there could be a restriction on, I mean, it would affect easements everywhere if there's a restriction that is, prevents reasonable use. I think this is reasonable use. This is access to the dominant property originally, and it's residential. It's, it's a shared zoning change for every lot. You're going to landlock all of those lots because nobody can use the access that they, that they were all given, so that nobody can then go with the zoning laws that change over time. So if it went from a one-unit possibility to five because times change and it is the village district, does that mean that every single lot that's attached to this easement cannot follow the zoning? And I, I just don't even think it makes sense, but...
Okay, Jimmy?
I don't, I mean, what's in my head right now is I don't know that the original intention was a granting or a document providing access for one, four, six, or 14 units. I don't think there was any language that references the number of horses, wagons, cows, airplanes, anything. I don't think there was any volumetric language in this access. It's just access. When you build a road, you don't say this road can only be used for 12 cars a day. If traffic increases and the road handles more cars per day, poor planning, but you don't stop using the road. So it's an act, you know, so that's kind of the way I'm looking at it. I would, I don't know what constitutes overburdening, and I don't know that this board is qualified to determine what would be an overburden. I do know some of the history of the property, and I know that it was a four-family, and two of the two-bedroom units were chopped in half and made into one-bedroom units, and it became a six-family, and I know that attic space was lived in. I know it was a hellacious condition for a while, and it's changed ownership. I've been watching for a period of time now, the property is, albeit slowly, being improved. What was a piece of property that was rapidly deteriorating is now standing kind of proud up there. So, you know, where me developing it, I think I'd have ripped the whole thing down, but they are doing, what's been done has been done nice. It doesn't, it doesn't scare me that something horrendous is going to be put in there. I see a little bit of a Chicken Little situation here that I don't think the sky is falling. It might, I don't know that it's an acorn, but I don't think it's quite as bad as abutters may think it's going to be. That's where I sit.
Okay, very well. Richard?
So, they, the people tried to go from Main Street, and it wasn't going to work, no matter what. They spent time and money on it. They redid plans. It didn't work. What else can they do? I, I just don't see that we can say, again, we don't know about the overburden, that's not on our end, but they have to be able to get into their property. And if they can't do it from Main Street, they got to have a way to get into their property.
Okay, very well. There you go. You got your four numbers, so carry on.
So I'd like to go through the standard under the bylaw, and then my brother can come over and, and say his objection. So, you know, under our bylaw, we're looking at 1470 for variances, so it follows the chapter 40A. We have to hit all of these in order to get to variance. Often, the first one is, is the most difficult that people fail on, the topography shape of the lot. Now, you've, no, you drive, probably drive by the lot all the time, that incline going up. And we did, Mr. Semple is correct, we, the client spent quite a bit to be able to try to engineer something that came from, you know, from Main Street. You have all of that within the reviews. It's frankly just not possible and not best for the town. So we believe that the other idea is the variance is keeping things sep, is the separate units. We think that's better look for the town. And it's important to note that if we were, if we remember in the beginning, if we were to attach all the units, you know, how many units we could get in a large, like, complex, it would have been under a lower threshold, the special permit. So, but we do believe this is better for the renters, having a garage, separate little area, a deck we put on, as well as was a suggestion. Literal enforcement of this bylaw really would create a substantial hardship. I think that's been stated by a few of the members of what he's spent trying to do different options here, access from High Street, then to Main Street, then back to High Street. So it's a financial hardship if he's only able to have this, this one, this one structure and unit. His intention is to, to have the best use of the area. So this desired relief can, and this is where the language, with substantial detriment to the public good. So we, we could, you can grant this relief, and it will not substantially detriment the public good. It's not, does it detriment or possibly detriment of abutters? It's the public. We're talking about that we have these beautiful units in the main building. We've created these separate duplexes, which we pared down quite a bit with your help when talking to extensive peer review, to make sure there's enough space for cars coming in and out of there, checked with the fire department. As far as all the other things regarding site plan review, keeping it separate, also the size of the garage doors, I know. So there's been a lot of things that the, I will say this clients, we've had other clients that haven't, you know, budged on things. He's really tried to work with the town. So like I said before, the opposition didn't have a problem when we were coming from Main Street, but now that we're, we're using this, I think that they're thinking there's going to be all this traffic, but there really hasn't been any evidence of that. And then the last thing is that it doesn't substantially derogate from the purpose of the bylaw. Now, the purpose of the bylaw is in that beginning section, where you know there's a list of factors of why we have the zoning law and what the intentions are, and it's to have thoughtful development, right? It's to have, encourage housing for all income. This is going to be much-needed rental income. This is owner occupied as well. My client Angela is, you know, can't wait for the main building to be ready so she can move in there. So this is clearly sticking with and doesn't nullify the bylaw. So as far as the variance thresholds for this, I believe it does fit within our box that we need.
Okay, very well. Troy, what you think on the variance?
I, I, I not had a problem with it from the beginning.
Okay.
Veronica?
I like the, the plan. I like the buildings, how they're situated, and I think that, you know, perhaps the neighbors like the plan that you have, as they only seem to be against the access from Main Street. But in terms of a hardship for the disconnection of the units, I kind of not understanding where the hardship comes there.
I'd be happy to address that through the chair. The substantial hardship there would, we have this existing, I think it was from the 1700s, property. So the idea would be if we, the other units that we have that we're looking for, to try to attach that in a way financially would be difficult, number one, attaching it, connecting it. Number two, aesthetically, it just would not be something that would be, that would be nice for that area. There's not any other big, kind of like hotel-looking things. And as far as the hardship for renting, I know a lot of the renters want their separate unit with a garage and like, you know, I don't think there's going to be necessarily children there, but there might be, but to having a little area in the back. So it creates a separation that I think is more quaint for the village, so, and is more marketable for the, for the developer.
All right. Good? Jimmy?
The only thing that's come to mind, I'm still, I've been kind of okay with this now that the density has been reduced. I am sensitive to the two people on High Street that feel as though they're going to have a lot of traffic going past their houses. But I would, I wonder if, if there's going to be two, four, six, and four is 10, there's going to be 10 units in there. When it snows out, the people on High Street that are in our position are going to get the majority of the access to their own property plowed by these people because they don't tend, residences are going to go unplowed, and the access and the maintenance. I'm just trying to find some silver lining to this cloud for them. Other than that, I've, I remain okay with this project.
Myself, I'm okay with the variance and special permit, by the way.
Richard? Rich?
Yep. We've hashed it over enough. I'm okay with the variance.
There's one other thing I want to get on record, thank you, through the chair. I know we're talking about ownership here, they each have this one-third. One thing that I want the board to be aware of is too, is, I mean, this property is actually in tax title. So the taxes on that T, sorry, the T shape is in tax title.
Who is paying the taxes?
Nope.
None of the three owners?
Nope. So I just would like to put that out there to the board.
So is anybody getting a bill?
I think that it was going to Ed Love, who's since passed, so I don't know if they've paid it by now, but that was something that, you know, we offered to pay the PAC taxes. We really, we tried to work with, with them.
Okay. Got to be quiet, sir, in the back. All right, going on the public, who want to speak in favor of the variance? Who want to speak against? Counsel, want to come forward? State your name for the racket again, sir.
My name is Attorney Mark Duchesne, an attorney with offices in New Bedford at 115 Orchard Street in New Bedford.
Okay.
I just want to, I know there's, I think the language of that easement is pretty good. And when you take a look at my sister's memorandum, and I know everyone's getting a little fuzzy on overburden, it says, "Together with the right, in common with others, having alike right of a 20-foot right of way leading from High Street to the Bump Homestead." A homestead, one place, one house, the farmhouse, not 10 different residents on one lot of 40,000 square feet. With that, I want to call your attention, and I, I sort of decided today I'd take a look at my law school professor's book, Bobrovsky, to see what I was missing. I don't think I'm missing much, except for the fact that it hasn't been really set forth. What they are coming before this board for is a use variance, the most disfavored of all kind of variances, because it changes the underlying dynamics. This is a village two district. And the village two district basically says it's to advance moderate density of residences. And the bylaw basically sets forth that the first residence has to have 15,000 square feet, and each succeeding residential unit has to have 2,000 square feet. My math says nine times 2,000 is 18,000. When you marry that to 15,000, you're talking about putting 10 units on an area of 33,000 square feet, 40,000 square feet. That's not moderate density. That is high density. And I point out to you, if you just take a look at page 44, I mean, page 22 in their, in their playbook from CJ Engineering, and this is from their, this is from theirs. You tell me with this overlay, which they provided, any place in there that has more than two units, substantial detriment to the neighborhood? Substantial hardship to the neighborhood? Take a look at it. There's numbers on all these houses. Now, let's, let's, let's talk a little bit about the standards here, and let's talk about what it says in your very bylaw. A variance may be granted when factors relating to soil conditions, lot shape, we have a square lot here, topography, it's a little bit higher than Main Street. Here's a key word in your bylaw, section 1470, creates an impracticability. You can't do it. They have a right to have by zoning two, two-family on that lot.
That's, I'm sorry, counsel, but that's incorrect.
As of right, as of right, the two-family, as of right in your bylaw.
As of right. I don't mean to disrupt you, but if you read our bylaw properly, as of right, they could put 14 units in that building. You're missing the, I don't know if you're familiar with our bylaw. Our bylaw is very clear, they do have the square footage and the frontage to put 14 units. The variance they're asking for, to separate the buildings. If they are to put it in one building, they'll only need a special permit.
In, in, under your zoning bylaw, it says you can have three to four family dwellings in an existing structure with a special permit.
Right. How about five plus?
What you have as of right, of five, no.
Five plus.
Five plus with a special permit.
Correct.
Right.
That's what we have.
But I said as of right, you only have a two-family.
Okay.
As of right, you have to grant the relief here.
But with a special permit.
With a special permit.
Correct.
There are various factors that go in. To grant a variance, I always equate granting a variance as like a stool. There's four legs to the stool. You can't pick and choose. You got to satisfy, like it says in your bylaw, you have to satisfy all the various factors here. You have to, there's going to be a substantial hardship, financial or otherwise. Okay, for the use variance, they have rights with a, a special permit, but to change the zoning so that they can have these detached dwellings is not, is not what the bylaw intended. It denigrates from the bylaw. That's one thing where you chuck off they haven't satisfied. And they talk in, my sister's memorandum here talks about the financial hardship. I think it says... Her hopes was to purchase this antique home in the hopes of restoring and the improvements for the town. Ten residential dwellings on one lot?
It happen, I mean, it happens all over the state of Massachusetts.
I'm not talking about the whole state of Massachusetts, I'm talking about this town. I just showed you the bylaw.
I, I understand.
I said, just showed you this. There's no place that has ten, ten residents on a lot in the Village District, is there?
That is.
There is?
A few. That's what I say. If you're not, if you're not from around town, I, I don't mean to be...
Financial hardship doesn't mean that you have to get the maximum out of it, and it's not practical. It's whether, whether you can comply with the zoning. And you could comply with the zoning here and put a two-family there, or you could get the special permit for, for four units.
I, I, I also disagree. And financial hardship, what, uh, Counselor Morton means, I believe, financial hardship would create, if they are to put the fourteen units in one building, it would create a financial hardship versus a putting them separate. And due to the topography of the land, it works better with separating them. That's how I look at it. I mean, we, we'll have, we'll have, we'll have the board give their input on that. But I have good experience with this matter, and that's how I see it. The bottom, bottom line, counsel, I have, I have to say, I, you know, I'm, I'm a very fair person, and I go pretty much with what the rule says. And, you know, I was against her with the easement. I'm still against the easement. But it is by right in this town, this, this gentle lady, the owner, if she, she could put fourteen units with the special permit in that building, as long as they're over six hundred fifty square feet of living space excluding, uh, hallways and bathrooms, she could put an addition.
She can't do that as of right, Mr. Chairman.
As, with a special permit.
With a special permit.
Correct. With a special permit. You know what special permit means in court, although my, I, my, your Counselor Morton thinks I don't know nothing about court. You know, special permit pretty much flies in court.
In your, uh, in your bylaw, with respect to a special permit, at fourteen sixty-one, specifically says all of the following conditions have to be met. And the very last one says, "The proposal as proof conforms with all other applicable provisions of the Wareham zoning bylaw." And you can't comply with the Wareham zoning bylaw unless you get a variance, so it's not complying. It's sort of a catch-22, but it says right here, you have to satisfy all these conditions. And it basically enumerates six various factors for your special permit. Use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. I think ten residential houses serviced by a twenty-foot right-of-way that goes on to High Street. High Street, yeah, High Street, um, which is gonna basically set forth probably a hundred vehicular trips a day. I think that adversely affects the neighborhood.
If I may just make you feel a little better that we're not just being outrageous with our ideas, the town just approved the bylaw on Wareham Village One, which is two hundred feet from there. We could go that same lot, about sixty units, that same size lot, at least sixty. You could do sixty units with the Wareham Village One. You could go fifty-five feet up and about eighty percent of the land, and you could do literally sixty units in a size lot like this. It's not uncommon for us, I, I know you don't live in town of Wareham, on the, on that area, it's not uncommon for us to have this much density. And there's a reason, for some reason, the planning department feels that it's needed in the town, and that's why they have this density. Like the Wareham Village One, it's double the density. So, if they were in the Village One, that same lot, there would be, with the new law, about sixty, but with the old bylaw, would be about, uh, twenty-eight, roughly. With a special permit, mind you.
With a special permit.
So, I'm, excuse me.
Go ahead.
I'm, I'm, I'm getting confused because I'm hearing numbers as far as how many could be there and couldn't be there. So, I'm looking on, uh, by law, which is dated April twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three, and, and, and it says Wareham Village Two, which I believe that's zoned as.
Uh-huh.
It says, um, one, um, it, it talks about one family and two-family, which you've, um, referred to a couple times. And then it says other res, then it says first dwelling unit, fifteen thousand square feet. And then it says each additional unit, two thousand square feet. So, if there's ten units in total, the first unit would get fifteen thousand square feet. Then the other nine would get two apiece. Two times nine is eighteen. Fifteen and eighteen is thirty-three thousand square feet.
That's exactly what it says.
The lot is forty-one thousand square feet. They've got room for four more possible units. Instead of ten, they could be asking for fourteen.
I was talking about how the bylaw talks about moderate density on a lot.
So, that's what lawyers do. They make, they talk about things the way they want it to be heard, but you keep referring to the rules, but you're not stating the rules accurately, so I'm...
No, no, I, I did, I did...
I'm not getting confused.
I did say fifteen thousand for the first, and I think I said you take the nine and you multiply it by twenty. That's eighteen. You had eighteen thousand, the fifteen thousand is thirty-three thousand on a forty-one thousand square foot lot. Is that moderate density?
According to our bylaw, it's allowed, whether it's moderate, substantial, insubstantial...
It's not allowed as of right. It's only allowed...
High density, low density.
No, that's what...
That's not what I, that's not what we're talking about. So, I, I, I'm not gonna sit here and debate it with you. I just wanted you to know that I wasn't being confused.
No, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that you were being confused.
Well, I, I know, but I know you got clients that are listening to, so I want them to hear.
Let's, let's move on in this matter, counsel. Different, different matter, different issue you have. Because I believe, if you ask all this board, that we, I think we all have the same idea on that matter.
Oh, I know, I knew that when I came into the door.
Right.
I, I...
Good, you have a good judgment.
Well, yeah, but I don't think it's being approached in accordance with the standards that are set forth, uh, by the, the Mass. Supreme Judicial Court in our case law.
I guess, but you'll have to hash this out in court, I guess.
I think that's what's gonna end up happening. I think we're gonna have to make a decision, and one party or the other party is gonna appeal that decision, and...
We'll see how it goes. Uh, that means, uh, you finished your arguments, uh, counsel?
Well, I, as I said, uh, you have to satisfy all the four standards for a variance.
Okay.
And I don't think they satisfy, um, in fact, nullifying and denigrating from the intent and purpose of the bylaw.
So, I have a question for you, Counselor, if I may. So, by your statement, it sounds like you're suggesting you'd rather there be fourteen units where it would not be a variance, it would be a special permit.
I didn't say that at all.
Or it could be separated with a variance for ten units. Because you're arguing that they shouldn't have a variance. The variance is for ten. A special permit would be allowed fourteen.
No, the variance is to change the use.
The variance is to have separate living units from one building. That is what the variance is for.
I couldn't find that in what it was submitted.
But that's what we understand it to be. So, I think we need to move on from that.
Well, if you could point me to where that says in the application, that would be nice. It is one of the most shallow submittals that I've ever seen.
I feel like this is, we're, we're starting to go in circles, and we're a lot, wasting a lot of time.
Yeah, exactly. If you, we should move to a different subject, and so we could carry on. Do you wanna, you wanna argue a different matter? Because it's not going, we going in circles now.
My argument is that when you take literally the definition in your bylaw for variance, and you take the definition in your bylaw for a special permit, they cannot satisfy all the requirements.
I, I totally understand, but this is for the board to decide with all due respect. It's not, it's not, I mean, we appreciate your comment and your input, but bottom line is the board, we capable people, so we, it's up to us to grant a variance, whether you feel it's right or wrong, or a special permit.
Can't try to deny.
You know, grant or deny, you know? It's, it's up to us. Okay. Thank you, anyway. Thanks for the input. We'll carry on. Counselor?
Is there anything else you wanna say, Sam? I think they cleared up the square footage. That was one thing. Yeah, it's forty-one thousand. Um, let's see those.
Okay.
Unless you have any questions.
No, we'll go.
We got an email from the, um, town peer review, the town engineer's peer review.
Yeah.
And as far as the current plan that's been presented, the peer review is finally satisfi...
Is Philip here?
Finally, but...
Yeah, Philip, let's call him in to make sure. Can you come forward, Philip? Please. Mr. Philip Burr. From Allen Major. Please have a seat.
Hi, uh, good evening. Phil Cordero from Allen Major Associates.
Okay.
Um, we, we did issue, um, JC had issued some final plans. We had a chance to review them. We did issue a letter today. I'm sorry it arrived very late in the day, but we wanted to make sure we weighed in on the revisions that they have made. Um, as far as we're concerned, they've addressed all of the technical matters associated with stormwater, uh, fire apparatus turnaround, uh, standard engineering practice. So, we didn't have any open issues, and that was the purpose of our letter. Um, we do want to bring to your attention two items that do remain outstanding, that if the board were willing to, uh, consider a decision on the application, would suggest conditions on the permit, one of which is a verification of the on-site soils as part of their stormwater management system, and the other is the application was deficient on providing an illicit discharge statement signed by the owner applicant. Uh, neither one of those at this point would change the intent of the application. Um, they could certainly be addressed later if the board were willing to entertain it.
You okay with that, right, Sam?
Yes, yep.
So, verification of the soil conditions and, and what was the other item?
Uh, there's what's called an illicit discharge statement, which is a, a mass DEP-regulated statement that has to be signed by the owner that assures there will be no illicit discharges to a stormwater system. They can't connect internal building piping, etc.
They can't put a sump pump in the sewer. They can't...
That's correct.
Okay, okay.
Yes, sir.
Illicit discharge.
Illicit discharge. Yes, sir.
Verification that there is no illicit discharge.
That they will, they will not connect illicit discharges to any of the stormwater or sewer systems.
They can't bring a sewer truck in there every night and empty, and tie it in and dump it?
Until they're caught. No, but they... They, they should not. And they're, it's an assertion that they will not do such things.
All right, very well. Uh, shall we go for, anyone else in the public wanna speak against this matter? All right, uh, hearing none. What's the wishes?
We had a point that we could consider closing the public portion of this hearing.
Anybody can make a motion.
If the board feels that. I mean, I'm ready to make that motion.
You could try it.
If the board's comfortable with it, I move that we close the public portion of this hearing.
We have a motion by Mr. Akavachi to close the, this portion of public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Troy. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Branca?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, aye. It's closed. Close for the public.
Okay.
Now, Mr. Wishes.
So, I go, I go back to what I've kinda been saying right along. I think, almost by right, or at least under a special permit, this applicant could have come to us with a fourteen, with an addition to that existing structure, seeking fourteen units. They could have been one-bedroom, or they could have been fourteen-three-bedroom. I think the bylaw doesn't specify the number of bedrooms. I think they came to us in earnest and said, "We know we can do this, and we know it would be kind of, kind of an ugly thing sitting up on the hill there. Surely could make a lot of money if we did it that way, but we think it would be more palatable to the town if we put some separate structures, a little more upscale, a little more fitting with this area. But you guys are gonna need to grant us permission to separate it into four, five, three, four, however many structures to make it more pleasing visually." I think that's where we sit. I think we're getting less density than we could have forced upon us. We're certainly getting less density if this is a forty-B project. For a mere hundred or a hundred and twenty thousand, this applicant could have hired a, um, a consultant and jammed forty or fifty units down our throat. And the only thing we could do would be try to mitigate it and tell them what color the shingles should be, 'cause we all know what forty-B does. So, all that said, I would move with this suggestions by a peer review engineer that we grant under the current plan presented and grant the variances necessary to let this project go forward.
All right, so is that a motion?
It's a motion.
All right, any discussion on that motion? We're gonna go the motion first for the variance, and then we do the site plan. We do two, right? You want two?
Right, correct.
Okay. Motion on the variance. How does, uh, so we have a motion...
To grant.
To grant the variance. Do I have a second on that motion? Or any discussion on that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Branca Dabenes. All in favor to grant the mo, and, and your statute is that it does meet statute requirement of chapter forty, A, section ten.
I believe it does.
Okay.
And with the...
It meets the statute requirement of, of a variance.
And with the conditions set by...
We, we'll do that in the site plan. The site, we'll set conditions on site plan.
Okay.
The soil conditions.
With the site plan. All right, so that motion by Mr. Jim Akavachi, second by Branca Dabenes. All in favor, say aye. Mr. Troy Larson, I'm gonna have to say first and last name in this matter because we know what's going. Mr. Troy Larson?
Aye.
Troy Larson is yes. Branca Dabenes?
Aye.
Jim Akavachi?
Aye.
Rich Sample?
Abstain.
Abstain on the variance. And I'm gonna abstain due to the easement. That's my thing on the easement, sorry. So, variance is gone.
So, we have a simple majority?
No.
Doesn't go anywhere in its...
That's with a forty-B, I believe, right, with, uh, some kind of, uh, housing.
Okay, any wish to motion to reconsider? Any motion, uh, wish to reconsider by any board member? So, help you God. None. So, okay, so it's lost. Thank you, sorry about that. There's no sense doing the site plan. All right, and again, for the record, my, my, my name is Nazir Akalasi, the Chair. I abstain due to the gray area of the easement, not on the variance nor on the site plan. I like the project, but I'm not comfortable with the easement.
And I would like to make the mo, uh, note that that's also my reason.
Okay, very well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move forward next hearing.
Yep.
All right, twenty-eight...
Did you watch the date that I'm signing it?
Yeah, that, we witnessed my signature. Twenty-eight dash twenty-three, Forest Devine, variance three oh three and three oh five, Flemisale.
Put that in the folder on this one, or...
We'll, uh, we'll give it to Sonia for the record.
Okay, this is my going. Variance. D, N, Y, night. It was three, zero, two. Didn't we just get a memo about a simple majority on something?
It's ten percent affordable.
Yeah, okay, that's right, okay. So all they had to do is make one of those units affordable, and I don't want to.
It depends. Yeah.
I, I just, I just want to say that out loud. We just got, we just got a memo, just speaking in general before we open the next hearing. We just got a memo recently that on, on affordable housing, if ten percent of the units are affordable, it doesn't require a super majority, it only requires a simple majority, and then a three, zero, two vote would have carried. So if your applicant should come back with one affordable unit, it might have an impact on things. Just, I don't.
Or if you can get the easement issue resolved.
It doesn't change anything to do with the easement, I'm just, just trying to pay attention to what gets sent to me.
Paul, do you have any more of those sheets?
Is everything from the last one in front of me back, so I can put it back in the right folder before we go to the next one?
What is that, yeah, this is?
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
All right, very well. So thirty-eight dash twenty-three, Forest Devine, and that's a variance three oh three, three oh five Plymouth Ave. Under the Mullen rules, I sign a statement here, and I think that's chapter thirty-nine, section twenty-three. I did sign a statement, and our clerk witnessed that I watched that on, on, on tape, and I'm okay to go back in this matter. Sonia, you have, just put this under, for the record, when you got a chance. All right, very well, public hearing still open, and let's go where we left it.
What are we on now, thirty-eight? Thirty-eight, yeah, Forest.
Three oh three and three oh five Plymouth Ave.
Does everyone have?
One, two, there's a couple. There's a couple. Thank you. Anything new to add that?
Um, no, I'll just open, so everyone have their packages?
Yep, we got one.
Okay, so this is three oh three, three oh five Plymouth Ave. What you have in front of you is a submission from Mr. Madden, which he can go through. If you recall, this is the, the pre-existing non-conforming structure, their cottage, that is on the water, that we have proposed to move back and shift. I don't know if anyone was able to go, the last time we met, some people wanted to go onsite to actually take a look at it. And this has already been approved through the conservation. So what Mr. Madden did, and he can go into more detail, is I think there were concerns regarding that hundred feet. So he spoke about the actual Protection Act, and then gave some examples of other, other builds in town that same, have the same buffer. So, and then he also attached that order of condition, so you guys could see that, that that was approved through the conservation board. They're very happy that we're moving that, that structure away from the pond. So that's where we were at with, at the last hearing. Wanted some more time to be able to kind of digest our build, and then be able to go and see the site. So hand it over to Mr. Madden.
Okay, I prepared that letter and submitted it to the zoning board on October nineteenth, and it was precipitated from a comment that came from the commission, I'm sorry, from the board, relative to perhaps moving the structure out of the one-hundred-foot buffer zone to the, to the pond. And what I, what I wanted to do is just explain, first of all, what the, how the Wetlands Protection Act figured into the entire project, what that hundred-foot buffer zone was, how the project was reviewed with conservation, how they allowed the project to be conditioned, to be constructed as proposed, as proposed on the plan. And really, it was just an explanation of things more than anything else. But there is no prohibition under the Wetlands Protection Act or under the local wetland bylaw of the town to work within the one-hundred-foot buffer zone to a, to a protected resource area. So I just identified that. We do have a, we do have a, a no-activity zone, a thirty-foot no-activity zone associated with conservation. That is the area that, under, under the local bylaw, we are restricted from doing any constructing or any activities within that, within that thirty feet. And aside from removing the cottage, there's a thirty-foot no-activity line shown on the plan that indicates there really is, there is no work associated with the project, even minor work such as site grading, I mean, no activity means precisely that. You can, you can do nothing. But the Conservation Commission, they did grant us the opportunity to remove the building that's down there and restore the ground on which it, which it sits. What I did is I, I also provided three.
If I may, Mr. Madden, it's not necessary. Thank you for the letter. That sounded not happen. I watched the tape. This is not our business. Whoever board member discussed this matter, this is not, I mean, we don't interfere with board's business. We don't like them to interfere with our business. I don't know, that should have gone there. But thank you for the lecture on the conservation. We've gotta move out of this. This is not our business.
All right, that's fine with me, I just.
No, no.
Tried to facilitate the request, no problem.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So let's go on to the, the argument of the variance. Counselor.
Yeah, if you reviewed the tape, we went into the different statutory requirements for, and this was two variances. And so because it technically, one lot that has these two principal residences, so it's pre-existing non-conforming. And then the other one was that the, the garage is going to be in front of the dwelling, which is a pretty common one, that we've seen many other variances have been approved because of, due to the topography of the water right there, putting the garage behind, closer to the wetlands, the topography really lends itself to the garage in front. So what we're seeking today are those two variances. And I don't know what else you want, if you want me to go into all those. I thought we kind of covered those on the prior.
I personally look at the garage, I do agree, you have strong hardship. I did read the letter of the commissioner, and most of my time, most of the time when I base my, my decision and space on what the commissioner writes, it's pretty much our eyes out there, and we act upon it unless we disagree on what he's saying. And really, the way I see, I know the board doesn't see it this way. If you have two houses, I'm not lying, you would need a special permit to tear it down to rebuild it. But you have a house and a cottage, and according to the commissioner, a definition of a cottage, we don't, it goes to, if you go to the, I read it, and it says, according to the dictionary, it's a small house. And if you go to the definition of a small house, it will have to have sanitary, it will have to have stove, cooking stove, so it would have to be like, somebody can live there year-round. And this cottage, according to the commissioner, don't have that. It's saying kitchen facility not onsite, bathroom facility not onsite, heating. I didn't go there, so I'm just based on the commissioner, I'm sure he's, he's right what he's saying. He's not coming up with these stories. And heating system not onsite. So how do you consider this as a dwelling?
Yeah, I'd be happy to talk about that.
Go ahead.
We're in a coastal community, and there are a lot of cottages. It doesn't have to be four-season for it to be a cottage. Some people just don't have heat over and on, plenty of cottages over there. We did provide pictures in the application that shows that there is, is a bathroom there. They were, they had a little kitchenette. I mean, it's, if you actually look at those pictures, I mean, it's, it is a place in the summer that they are. We have past precedent with, with a lot of different smaller cottages, everyone calls them cottages, here in town, where they were able to take the structure, redo it, move it back. Whether it's, I mean, I, I read also the submission he gave, and he's saying it's a variance. I mean, I'm, I'm not denying it, so that's, I think it's in the best interest, and the topography really lends itself. I mean, this pond is continually eroding, eroding. So if you went down there, you saw how close the water is, and how the, the structure is actually kind of sinking in.
I totally agree with this.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I, I think it's honestly something for the bylaw to be corrected, to have a definition of cottage, because there is a lot of cottages in Wareham.
Well, that's the problem, because we have a lot, I personally see, because we have a lot of cottages. However, again, on the Webster, Unibridge dictionary, cottage is a small house. And if you go to definition of a small house, it has to be like a small house, which you don't have in this cottage, and so-called cottage. So the way I see it, it's a shed that the kids have been hanging in it, not a cottage. That's how I see it.
Yeah, so I disagree with that. Let me just get a little bit more background. So this is actually, was the grandparents' property. And currently, Mr. Hunt, who is brother of Mary, lives in the four-season structure up above, if you've been there. And then down below, Mary and her husband would come there in the summers and stay below. So it's two separate dwellings. So it's not like, it's just a place where the kids hang, and this is a, a summer retreat for them that they come down. Their, their ultimate goal here is to make it so that they could be there for retirement. I mean, it's a beautiful area if you were down there. There's two separate driveways in, it's kind of, kind of hidden. I, I, when I drove down there, I had to, had to figure out which way to go. But it's enough land there as well. So I mean, as far as the debt, we can argue back and forth about the definition of a cottage. But I mean, the variance that we're seeking, I think, is reasonable with all things considered. Moving, I mean, the topography is there, the incline as well. If you walked down to the cottage, if any of you were there, you saw the roots and all the trees.
All these man, all these things you're saying, I agree a hundred percent, except I don't see this cottage as a small house, but then I'm one vote. Troy, what do you think?
I, I didn't have a problem with it last time. I still don't have a problem.
Okay, Veronica?
So I, I hear what the chair said about conservation, and that was directed at me. And I think the reason why I was kind of pointing toward that as something is, I guess, because of the. It is, but I'm far from it. Okay. Can you hear me a little better?
Yep.
Okay. So I think part of my issue, I guess, and why I was like sticking toward conservation and looking at that, is that the commissioner's letter does concern me a little bit. So I was kind of like, oh, well, if we're gonna, because I, I'm not sure that I actually see this as a residence as well, and I felt like if we're gonna do it, let's get it completely away from where it is, if we're gonna say yes. And I'm, I'm not trying to tread on conservation's toes. It's just I'm having a little bit of a hard time accepting the whole idea of the project itself, which is why I was kind of stuck on that bit of knowledge that I understand of building within a certain area of wetlands. So I am a little on the fence still.
Very well, Jimmy?
I did, I did take the opportunity to go to the site. I believe, Richard, I believe you went there as well, didn't you? Yeah. I did take the opportunity to go there and, and look at existing conditions. And if I understand correctly, prior to this application, there has been designed and installed a fairly elaborate septic system that services both structures. Is the one down on the water being pumped up into this new system now?
Yes, it is.
So there, so there are sanitary services. I didn't go in, whether it's a bunkhouse, a cottage, or a shack on the water, or, I don't, you know, I didn't go into that and make a determination as to what it was. I was onsite, and I saw, what evidence I saw was two separate dwellings, two separate ability to live. Now, yeah, it was one used seasonally and one used year-round. It surely appeared that way. But if you go down to Swift's Beach, or Rose Point, or a bazillion other places in Wareham that was historically a seasonal community, you can find units everywhere that were only used, you know, until, until, until one of the children had a kid and a boyfriend that couldn't support him, and they needed a place to put him, they were, they were seasonal units, and they became year-round, and, you know, we'll go live in the cottage. So, you know, we've, we've, we've got that peppered all over Wareham. I don't. I, I, I don't want to argue whether it's a residence, not a residence, a cottage, a bunkhouse. It appears to me that it's an improvement to the property, and it's an improvement to the town. It's an improvement to the tax base. So with all that said, I'd be inclined to go ahead and grant the, the use. That's all I have to say.
Rich? So I have been pondering on it, and I saw that the cottage, it's a little cottage. Is it cut in stone that they need that garage also? Because you're looking at a structure, now we're adding two structures. You got the house and the garage. Is it, how steadfast are they on the garage?
That'd be something I have to talk to the clients, but I mean, I think the.
I mean, it just, it's, it's one structure, I mean, I'm, I'm for it, but I just, it just seems like a, a great leap to be able to add that garage also. That, so it's just been the three weeks that we've been in recess on this, that I've been kind of weighing the options of right and wrong. Cottage, I mean, small building, then we got a bigger building, now we got a garage. So that, to add that second structure is kind of just hanging on in my head to be like, you know, you get the house, but now we're adding a garage also. Where does a garage get to come in? That's all that I have on that.
Yeah, I mean, that would be something that I'd have to talk to the client about if, if that's something that hinges on them getting the main residence.
Well, it's just that, I mean, we got that, the little cottage, and then we, you want to move it up, do a house. But then we're adding the garage. I just don't know if, in my head, if the garage is necessary.
How big is the lot?
Well, it's made of a bunch of different lots, so.
Roughly, total.
Combined area, one point six seven acres.
I, I personally don't see a problem with the, the garage. Again, I have a problem with the variance. Also, again, to Mr. Devenez, don't, I, I advise you do not let the conservation issue fog your decision. This is zoning, has nothing to do with conservation. Just you gotta accept, you can't even think about it.
Got it.
Okay? Why, you still arguing that you want to?
No, I wasn't. I said, I agree with you, is what I said. I said, I was fogged by the whole variance.
My problem personally, I have a hard time granting this. It would be easier for, personally, I, I can't grant this variance personally. With the definition of this, it would, I would have no problem granting the variance, coming up with two dwellings. Say, I want to build two dwellings. But we do this. We grant this cottage, so-called cottage, which is not a house. And you know what's gonna happen next week and the week after. We're gonna have one after another coming in, and I don't think it's right. This is my problem. I, I would be a lot more comfortable granting a variance just from scratch. Say, I want to build another dwelling. But I cannot ignore the commissioner's letter.
What's it, they are asking for, another dwelling?
No, they asking that.
Oh, you, you're just saying you want to, they want a dwelling in place of a non-dwelling.
Right.
Okay.
But we cannot ignore, the commissioner's letter is very clear to, did you guys read the letter?
I did.
You read it? Richard, you read the, it's very clear that it's not a, it's not a small house. Yes, yes.
Well, just, you know, I read, I just read it tonight. Well, just, you know, I read, I just read it tonight, but I think, just take note. I mean, those are the minimum standards for human habitation. There's probably many, many places in Wareham that do not meet the minimum standards for human habitation that are currently being occupied. That cottage, I would say it's, it's basically a deficient house. It doesn't meet the minimum standards. It does have a potable water supply to it. It does have the sewage, proper sewage disposal from it. Granted, it does not meet the minimum standards for habitable, habitable space. But, you know, when you look at the two fundamental things that are necessary to live somewhere, it is an ability to have some potable water for, for drinking and, and what have you, and also some sanitary facilities. I mean, it's, it's far from a 55-gallon drum buried in the, buried in the ground right next to the pond where your wastewater goes into it. It's a bona fide legitimate connection to a, to a sanitary system. No doubt, the minimum standards are not met. But I don't think that it needs to detract from the fact that it's used as a dwelling unit.
I agree with your argument, but the main thing that the state of Massachusetts agrees on to, that a means of cooking has to exist.
If I may?
You don't have to, let me finish, please. You don't have, I understand you could have a potable outside, you could wash with the bucket, whatever. I understand this argument, but a cooktop is a must. Go ahead, counsel.
Yeah. Did you see in the additional information, the, this was the second supplemental, and I can hand this to you, too. View of the kitchen. You have a full fridge there. You have a convection oven there. You have a microwave. It's my understanding that there used to be some sort of cooktop as well. And then if you, I'm not sure if the commissioner or anyone went in the unit. Obviously, it's winter now, so they're not in it. But there was a space also for a shower. This is the bathroom. This is not, you know, an outhouse. This is a sink, a toilet. As far as the standards, I understand the slippery slope argument, right? You let this one in, floodgates. But it's, it's your deference, people, to decide if it's, if it's a, if it's a situation that this should be allowed. This is moving a, frankly, if you read through the, I know we don't want to talk about conservation, but they're saying to move all the wood away from the, the water. If you look at the conditions within that order of conditions, they were all for it, clearly. And because of the, the fact that this, this pond, it overflows, I showed you pictures as well of all the flooding. So, I mean, huge amount of flooding with all that rain. So if we were denied, this stays there. It stays as a hazard. It's not, it's not, obviously, my client wouldn't be happy with that and, but it's, you have a TV, you have a full Wi-Fi in there. I think you're able to have deference if things, if other matters, if this is approved and other matters come in front of you, to be able to decide on the merits of the application and the standards that are within the cottage.
I, I have a question.
Go ahead.
What does the field card say for cottages in Wareham and what does it say about this property? Does it list a cottage or does it list a shed?
Cottage.
It lists that it has a cottage?
And just for...
Family has a cottage.
And a cottage, is what the field card lists?
Yeah, I think it would be helpful if Mary comes up, some of the owners.
Commissioner, I'd just like to ask, too, how many of these cottages have already hooked up to a viable septic system? So when we go down the road, if this thing's got a 55-gallon drum underneath it...
No, we've already determined it's tied into a brand-new one.
So how many cottages in Wareham, considered cottages, have a
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Already hooked up to a viable, approved septic system? And I'm gonna, and I'm gonna, and I'm gonna say this probably maybe, I'm gonna probably say that there's maybe 1% out of all of them that could possibly, this cottage is probably out of all the ones I've ever been in and I've lived around ponds. I've never seen one hooked up to a perfectly good septic system and be considered as a residence.
No question asked.
I mean, I mean, all the other, all the, maybe the other cottages that come along, they don't have that. So there's a difference between them. That's my thoughts on that.
Hi, I'm Mary Myers. I'm the owner of this property. There's a full kitchen. There's a completely full kitchen. We do full meals there. There's a convection oven. There's a stove top. There's toaster oven. There's a microwave. There's a full fridge. There's a sink. Underneath the sink is a hot water heater. We have hot water, cold water. Through the pandemic, this is where I was having my showers, is, is, is here, okay? Because I wasn't going up into my brother's house. I was, I was taking my, my marine, my father, my marine bounce here. I, I was fully functional from April until October. We have the, you know, you have the hot electric heaters, you know, to let us stay as long as we can. But our, our dream, our goal is to retire here. And that's the, the purpose of the, the garage, the shed, the storage, that kind of thing. But as far as this being able to, to be a single-family dwelling, which we've been taxed on for decades as being a single-family.
Can I see that picture, please? Because it's not in the application, if you don't mind.
I was just looking at all the pictures on there. It's, it's, it says photos if you go onto the zoning board. That's, just for the record, when I'm looking at my phone, I'm not doing any social gathering. I'm looking at the ZBA website so I can gather it up, just in case anybody's wondering in there, thinking I'm not being, paying attention, so. It's, it says photo. I, I don't know. I, I just went on it and I pulled it up and I saw that exact photo on there. That's, that's, that's what I was looking at on my phone, that exact photo. So I don't, I mean, I'm not being corrected here. I looked at it. I saw it. I pulled it up.
Joe, through the chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
When the commissioner went there, he didn't see evidence of a kitchen. He didn't see evidence of a bathroom. We're being shown evidence of that. Do you think you possibly overlooked it or was it just not there when you went there? Or I'm not trying to put you on the hot spot.
That's fine.
Yeah, yeah. You didn't see it. You didn't see a kitchen. You didn't see a bathroom.
When, when, there is a kitchen there.
Yeah.
There was not a stove there with an oven, as per the minimum standards that it have to be. May I finish? And I asked the homeowner, does he have a shower? No, we have a sink and a toilet. So there's three components of a, of a sanitary that you need. You need a sink, a toilet, and a shower or a tub, something to bathe in. A kitchen, you can have all your cabinets. You can have a refrigerator, et cetera. Main component is a cooktop stove with a certain size oven, minimum standard. The other third one is living, which would be a heat source. And there's no heat source. And you can't use portable. It has to be a permanent heat source. That's all I just wanted to bring that attention.
You're not arguing that you have a full heating system there. You're...
I'm not arguing that we have a full heating.
And again, I'm just bringing this to the board's attention and you guys can make your own decision. What, you want to consider a dwelling? I'm going by the definitions.
Thank you, Commissioner.
There was a full stove oven. We pulled it out to, to fit a convection oven, a very large convection oven that you can see in that picture, which fits full, I mean, we have full meals there all year-round, you know, all, all for those, the spring, summer, and early fall. And as far as the bathroom is concerned, right next to it is a spot where a shower was going to be added to that and would have been added to it already, you know, if we were allowed to. And I also did point out to the commissioner, I'm, I'm sorry, that the hot water system underneath the kitchen area, we were using that also for sanitary bathing and everything.
Your tax bills says two dwellings?
Yeah.
Single.
Why don't you hand that, this is, um...
I did a summary.
All the lots.
I do have my tax, my actual tax bills. And this is the 303, and it's, it's 101, single family. So we've been paying for two single families. It's a lot this, lot this, lot that hit, and then the dividing line, and then lot this, lot this.
All right. Okay. Thank you. Troy, what do you think? Here with that.
I'm good.
Veronica?
I'm okay with it.
Jimmy?
I mean, okay.
I'm okay.
Any audience, anyone in favor of this matter? Anyone opposed? On, on, on Zoom, anybody in favor? None? All right.
Anybody raising their hand? Nothing? Okay.
What's your wishes?
Well, let's close the public portion. Let's get everybody to stop talking. I'd make a motion to close the public portion of this hearing.
Can we find out about the garage first? Wasn't there, Rich had a question about that?
We can talk amongst the board even with the public hearing closed.
Okay.
I would, oh, no, I, I actually would like to discuss that because I don't want to be in a situation that we can't discuss it if someone has a different feeling. So as you heard from Mary, that's the retirement, having the garage. But if it's gonna hinge on them being able to have the house, you know, I think she'd prefer to have the house. But obviously, the garage would be something we're looking for. The variance on it is just because it's in front.
Right.
I think she would be able to do it if it was, you know, right next to it per the bylaw. So I just want to get the feeling of what people think about that.
I, I believe, I feel the same way. If it's gonna be year-round with the snow, it's essential. Again, it's 91,000 square feet, not 70,000. All right. So back to, who, who was commenting?
My, my, my motion was to close the public portion.
We didn't get a second on this. Do we have a second? Second by Veronica. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, aye, close.
Okay. So before we make any motions on granting or not granting, I think we ought to have a chat about garage or no garage. How, how, how bad do you feel about the garage?
I, I'm, it's, it's not that I feel bad about it. It's, it's what we're, we're taking one structure and adding two structures is all I was concerned about. And if they could live without it, it would be nicer. But, you know, we have the other members of the boards that can make their own decisions. That's just what I brought up because I was thinking of it for the last three weeks and just, here we are. Here we are. And I'm just, from what, what I'm hearing from arguments, we, we're taking a little house and we're trying to add a big house and a garage.
But I don't think we're over...
I'm just, that's, I'm just, I'm just asking if they could, I'm not, it's not hinging, it's not gonna hinge on my vote, but it would be nice, and my thoughts, it was just that if we're adding a garage, too, it seems like we're just, what we're swapping out is a lot more.
It's not gonna impact your vote one way or the other?
I, I'm for it, but it just seems like there's a lot more on there. The garage is just an add-on that, you know, what, what they're, what they're asking for and what we're trying to do here, I just didn't know if they could live without the garage.
It's a pretty big lot and, you know, it's
It is a good size.
Right there on the pond. And if they really want a garage a lot, I'd be happy to swap houses with them and I'll move down on the pond and they could come move in my house. It's only 160 years old and needs lots of work, though.
Let's make a motion on the house first, on moving the house.
You're moving the house?
I'm moving and rebuilding the house.
Okay. I'm, I'm, my motion is to grant the request as requested, as shown on the plan. Grant the variance. It's a variance that we're granting. It's not a special permit.
Any argument on that?
Why isn't it a special permit?
To have a second dwelling.
But it's existing.
It's, no, we're variance. The variance is the garage being closer to the street than the house.
But we're not talking about the garage.
Let me clear this. No, it is a variance to rebuild because the commissioner don't think it's a house. And I personally, if you guys want to grant to tear down this house and build the house, I personally will say overturn the building commissioner letter that's a variance and have him tear it down and rebuild it because we're opening a can of worms. That's what, that's what I would do.
So do we need to, I, I mean, we just are making, taking a vote to decide whether this is a special permit for the restructure of the house or not?
According to the commissioner, it's a variance. They're building a second dwelling. So you got a vote on variance. If you're hard set to build...
I think it's two variances, aren't there?
Right. The garage, we're talking about the house now. If you're hard set that you want to grant this variance to this lovely couple, I would say overturn the decision and call it a special permit to tear down and rebuild because you're gonna get us in trouble.
I'd make that as the form of a motion.
Second.
Okay. We have that overturning the commissioner's letter that it's not a variance, it's a special permit to tear down this house and rebuild and motion by Jim, second by Rich. All in favor in this? Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, aye.
All right. I thought we'd make a motion that we grant a variance to allow them to put the garage in.
No, let's go, it's a special permit. Let's grant a special permit to re, tear it down and rebuild.
Tear down?
The house and rebuild that.
Yeah, we just voted on that.
No, we voted on overturning the commissioner's decision.
Okay, okay. So then...
Unless you want them to come back with a special permit.
No, 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 no. Okay.
Application.
Okay. So I see what, I'm sorry. You're making it three steps, not two.
Yep, okay. So like move that we grant a special permit to build the house.
And that's findings that's not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood with the standard conditions. Do you have a second on Jim's motion?
Second by Veronica.
Veronica's second. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And I'm gonna deny, but it still carries. So 401. On the garage, what's the wishes?
Is that gonna be a variance or a special?
It's a variance.
Okay. So I make a motion to grant the variance for the garage.
So we have a motion to grant the variance being in the front of the house based that meets statute requirement of 48, section 10, the topography of the property, correct, counselor?
Yes, the topography, the steepness and the location of the wetlands.
Right. Okay. That's the motion by Jim. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Troy. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Obstain.
Obstain. Jim?
Oh, aye.
Jim? Rich, sorry?
Aye.
And aye, I grant. So it carries. So you get 4011. Obstain, it carries. You get them both. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
So the garage was 401?
Yep.
401. You overturned the commissioner was 500?
Correct. Special permit, 410.
And the special permit was 41. You denied or you...
I denied.
You denied.
Zero. Okay. Okay.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Man.
Thank you. Thank you. Good night, people.
Very well.
You got anything?
320 Cranbury Highway, request to continue December 13. Are you...
Yes, yeah.
Just give us a minute. We gotta take some, also we're not confused.
Cranbury Highway is the old, okay. So we're, we're continuing the, we're continuing the old, uh,
All right, very well. Counselor, for 39-23, just your name for the record?
Yep, Attorney Julian Morton. And I, I just watched your last hearing. You don't have another November meeting, correct?
That's it.
So, so I was correct. Okay. So December 13th, we're asking just for a continuance. Still working on, I know you wanted some information on the teeing up of the cars. So we're just allowing some time for engineering and whatnot, so.
Okay. And you don't want to argue at all tonight?
Nope, no. And I did in the letter extend the variance deadline to, I believe, December 31st. Is that right?
That was gonna be next.
I got you. Yep. So the 13th.
You extended everything?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
Continued, all right. Can we get a motion to continue 39?
So move.
So we have a motion by Richard to continue 3020 Cranbury Highway. Do I have a second on the 13?
Second that.
Second by Jim. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, aye. It's on December 13th. Again, just for the record, I reviewed that minute and I signed a statement for this matter.
There you go.
If I may, I would ask that you go onto the, I'm number four as well, but I'd love if, I don't know if it's Attorney Perry or who's on the next one, if I could have a, a break, if we can move around the order.
Before you need to get up and go for a walk.
If that's okay with everyone.
So you for Wareham Housing?
Yeah.
All right. It's okay. We'll table that.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
No problem. 45-23?
You're putting those aside, yeah.
Josh D. Olin, special permit, can pre-answer permit or variance, site plan review, 2613 Cranbury Highway. site plan review, two-six-one-three Cranbury Highway.
Which one's there? That's the lecture. He wants back in the folder. Throw it away? Good, because the person that has to carry it back to the town hall was grumbling about how heavy the box was anyway. She's not listening right now, but, oh, she's not acknowledging it.
She needs a cart, like a cart.
I don't twist the knife, I just stick it in. One, my goodness. Yeah, here's a couple of these. You guys, looks like a plan to share.
Three full-size copies there, Jim.
One, two, here's, and then there's a, yeah, give me that one back. No, keep that one, that one, he's got, you're in the middle, you got it, okay. We're good, perfect. And I need to read, hopefully I can get through it without coughing my brains out. Donor Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on November eighth, twenty-twenty-three at six-thirty PM in room three-twenty of the Wareham Multi Service Center, forty-eight Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., zero-two-five-seven-one, to consider petition number forty-five dash twenty-three for a special permit and variance from the requirements of Article three, Table three-twenty, Article six, section six-twenty-three, Article nine, section nine-twenty, and Table nine-twenty-one, Article ten, and section one-oh-four-two under the Wareham zoning bylaws to Joshua A. Diolam, trustee of twenty-six-eighteen Cranbury Highway Realty Trust, care of Robert L. Perry, esquire of one-ninety-four Main Street, Suite two-fifteen, Wareham, Mass., proposing to convert a residential garage into a commercial use, motor vehicle sales and repair in the Commercial Strip zoning district at the current business located at twenty-six-eighteen Cranbury Highway, Wareham, Mass., which appears on Assessors Map one-ten, lot one-oh-five-one in the Commercial Strip zoning district.
All right, very well. Name and address for the record, and let's hear it.
My name is Attorney Robert Perry and I represent Mr. Diolam here tonight.
Sam I. Melly with J.C. Engineering.
Joshua Diolam, twenty-six-eighteen Cranbury Highway.
Okay, very well, we're starting that.
We were before you, maybe last year, maybe a little longer ago than that. And we thank you, Mr. Chairman. You made some recommendations to us as how we may better approach this situation.
Before you go, Counsel, just point to clarification.
I'm sorry.
It says comprehensive permit for what, why? Or it's misprint, Sonia, what's a comprehensive permit for?
I followed the letter.
Ah, there's no housing project there, right? You're not doing a housing?
No, we're not doing an awful lot. If you look at the plans, and we have a single-family dwelling on that property, up to the front of that property. That's remaining intact. We're perhaps moving the parking spaces for that since it was up until now random parked, parked wherever they wanted to park. We're designating parking spaces for them at this point. The important thing is my client is seeking to have a Class Two license there. Got a couple of issues that he has to resolve through variances. We submitted to Mr. Turner a request for a permit and he denied it. And you have, as I think it's Exhibit F in my package for you, his denial letter. And based on that, we put before you the application we now have before you. Originally, my client came before you asking to be able to have his tow trucks there, but he wasn't particularly asked for repairs because right next door is his father who has a mechanic repair facility that's been operating for longer than I can remember, even though I represented him when he came into the place many, many years ago. So even, if my client has granted the relief he wants, a lot of the heavy-duty repairs would be done next door. On the property, just behind the single-family dwelling, is a garage that I heard the, sorry, I'm actually reading the citation that residential garage, well, was originally built, I know, by the then-owner, whom I represented for the time he bought the place, because he did automotive work there, but he didn't do it properly. So he built that garage for the purpose of doing automotive work. My client wants to put in, and he's, I think he's done some renovations on the garage, and it really looks nice, whole property looks nice. And if you grant his application, it'll look an awful lot nicer because I think that Sam has done a really good job of putting this together. It's taken some time, but he's put a lot of effort into it. I think I'd like to let him explain the plan and then I'll talk to you about the variances that I would need to make this go if that's acceptable to you, but people. Going to try to shorten this up as much as I can. I didn't bring in thirty people in favor like I did the last time. I know that drew it out and just, you know, didn't gain us an awful lot. We have one in opposition, I'll talk about that when the time comes. So Sam, if you could explain the plan to the board, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, sure, so as Mr. Perry had mentioned, there's an existing single-family and an existing garage. Those are going to remain, there's no proposed structures here. We have proposed to pave the front portion of the property south of the garage and leaving the remain as an existing graveled travel area for storage of vehicles. We're also proposing a number of arborettes down the side and rear property line as well as some fencing to kind of block in that storage area so you're not going to see that as you're driving by or if you were to pull into the property. Aside from that, we did provide drainage, which will account for all this pavement with a catch basin that'll run off into some subsurface leaching chambers. Aside from that, proposed business sign out front, some decorative landscaping. Really, those are, those are the only proposed changes on the site.
Okay. Commissioner, I didn't have time to go your letter. Can you just go quick for us with that letter? I know we need a special permit on a CG commercial use, junk commercial for more sales. What's the rest?
Article three, the use, excuse me, Article three, the use regulations. You got your density and dimensional regulations that are called out. I called out Article nine with the parking spaces. I don't think that's reflected correctly on the plan. So you need two spots for the one-family dwelling. And the garage is, I'm trying to remember, approximately forty by twenty-eight-hundred square feet with two bays, two garage doors. So in my determination, that, that needs five spots per bay, which would be ten. And the remaining spot, you could either call it business use or you could call it office space, would be one. So that building should generate eleven spots, plus the two for the single-family. And then you're also going to need, if you're looking for a Class Two, you need a place to put those vehicles, if you're going to display them to sell.
And I think we've reflected that in the plan, but we're going to do whatever you need, Paul.
No.
I tried to make that clear, and, you know, we're looking at thirty spaces now versus the nine spaces we were originally looking for. And we can allocate them any way that you would like them allocated.
That's not a.
Isn't this?
I'm just, I'm just bringing.
I understand, I appreciate it.
Just bringing it to the attention of the board, what I see, the chairman.
You've been wonderful.
I'm speaking with the chairman, please.
But Article three, that's us requiring, as far as I know, a special permit for used car license. That's one of my prayers before you.
Right.
Right.
As far as lot area, non-residential use, our septic, forty thousand square feet, we don't have any septic for the garage at this point. We don't have any water in the garage, is that correct?
Right, you're going to build one.
So, I mean, we've only got a house and an adequate septic system for the house.
Right.
So I don't fully understand that one night, and I think, well, I'm not sure it would be under your bailiwick, but in fact, we did have an issue, but I don't think we have an issue at all. Did I interrupt you because I didn't mean to, Paul? I thought you got to the end, but I realized maybe you didn't.
Counselor, can you keep it to us, please?
Pardon me?
Just direct your comments to the board, not the commissioner, if you don't.
I'm sorry, but I felt bad if I interrupted, Paul.
That's all right.
Okay.
Thank you.
May I finish, Chairman, please?
Please.
And Article ten, the landscaping, I don't believe that is reflected on the plan either. Especially on the east side. And the east side, I know that the attorney had said that there's been a business there for twenty years, but that business is not permitted. It's been cited a number of times. The building that was built on that lot, there is a notation in the permit. I have the permit number here, it's B-dash-two-zero-dash-seven-four-nine, January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one from Antonio.
Diolam.
Diolam, sorry, excuse me. And he wrote in an email text to the portal, personal use only, not a business, so.
A building.
Excuse me?
A building different, the.
The building to the right.
Building that he got a permit for that isn't built.
Excuse me?
I'm sorry, now as he told me to not talk to you.
Let's, let's, let's go over, we get the commissioner a letter, we know, I understand that, that's very well. Bottom line, we're going to start, you are eligible to have a dealer license or whatever, but you need a site plan review.
I do, I do.
Okay, we need a site plan, we need a fifty-three G account, and you got to go through the site plan process. Okay, that makes sense, Sam?
Yep.
Okay, and you know the drill. So apparently, the way it looks on the plan, I know Alan Major going to come back, they're going to see paving, they're going to see impervious area, they're going to see, they need landscape and architect, all these things. We'll let them deal with it, this is their property, that's not ours. And we'll base our decision on the recommendation. So we know, how many cars you doing? How many cars you want to sell? Like how many parking?
We were looking for thirty on the plans.
Okay, very well. And apparently, it's going to go to police, fire department, all this, it's got to qualify for all that stuff. So we have to get income, you just got to, Sam will explain to you and the counselor, that's a lengthy process. So we have to hear from all these boards and we'll, and then we'll sort it out. I'm going to open, I'm going to go to the board quick. There's not much to talk about the plans until we have Alan Major review this, but we'll get the census, then we'll open it to the public, okay? Troy?
I really don't have anything right now.
Veronica?
Is this, so the applicant information sheet says this is zone commercial strip. The letter from the commissioner says it's commercial general.
It's a junk commercial. Commissioner's right, right. Two thousand and seven, right? Okay, that's it.
Thank you, that's it.
So we're talking about, we're talking about site plan review.
Yes.
So site plan review would assume that under Article three, the commercial use, the special permit for motor vehicle use, would that need to be granted separately? And should it be granted before they go to the land? So don't we need to kind of deal with that before we talk about a site plan?
No, they need to approve totally with us before they go to select. Site plan has to be approved.
So they got to get a site plan approved before we tell them whether we're going to give them a special permit or not?
Well, that's together, special permit.
Okay, so it's all going to come under one vote, okay, that's.
But we don't grant the license.
So we're putting, we're putting the motor vehicle.
Selectment, yes.
Special permit and the site plan under one vote.
Exactly, special permit and.
Oh, I think it's two votes for the one meeting, I trust.
One, one, one strike of the anvil.
There you go. Good way to put it, Jim.
Yeah.
It's also a mixed use.
Because we get the multifamily, because you get the single family on it.
Right, mixed use is allowed, Commissioner, right, and you see?
They're allowed to have a single family in, on the same lot?
I think it is, actually, I think it's the only zone in Wareham that allows.
I'm pretty sure it's okay, but.
It keeps coming back, Commissioner, with your letter, the comprehensive permit part of it, I don't understand what's.
Where does it say that?
Comprehend, the word comprehensive is.
On Article fifteen, it says comprehensive permit or a variance. It's on your letter.
You're saying we need one or the other, not both?
Oh, that's the article, that's how.
It's the article.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, that's the article, he just, I got lost on that for a minute, but he just cites the article for us.
I bet, it was advertised that way, too, I saw what you're doing on the housing. Okay, no problem. So Jim, I mean, Rich, what do you think for right now?
Well, for right now, I'm, I'm good, but I just have a quick question. Going down the road the other day, Tuesday, seemed like there was some kind of a ramp truck or a trailer truck, a truck with a trailer on the back for cars parked across the street. How much of that's going to go on down the road? I mean, you don't own across the street and it seems like you're already, it seems like it already overflowed out there and we're trying to do away with outflow.
There better not be any.
There was, it was parked right across the street on the other side heading towards Wareham Ford. I went by it two or three times.
It wasn't near my trucks, didn't have anything to do with any of my business, but I often see trucks parked like that in that area as well as right in front of the Ford and Chevy dealers that are, you know, within a mile, pretty much weekly.
I'm glad it wasn't you, because we committed to you previously, wouldn't do it.
That truck was just, I mean, I frequent that road a lot. And that, that stuck out to me as one of the first times I've seen that over there. And I already see, we've kind of had a hard time with you, we're getting you in here and doing things. I don't know what to believe and what not to believe. I'm done right now, thank you.
All right, very well. I want to go to the public, who's in favor of this project? Who's again, in favor?
Yeah.
Want to come forward, please state your name, why you're in favor of this project? State your name and address, please.
Antonio Diolam. I'm Josh's father. I own the property, I bought his. I came to this town back thirty-four years ago when Cranbury Highway ended. And if you guys probably all remember back then when the highway ended and everybody kind of wanted a little piece of the pie on Cranbury Highway to maybe someday try to make a business and do something for themselves. And I'm proud of my son who's trying to do the same thing, so I'm definitely in favor of it.
Very well, thank you, sir. Thank you. All right, anyone else in favor? Anyone against this account, you want to come forward, please?
Christopher Clarty, twenty-six fourteen, twenty-six sixteen, I'm a director butter. East side of my property. I wrote a letter, I'd like to pass this out to all you guys, if that's okay?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
I got me some letters, but this is a thick one. I said I've seen some letters, but this is a thick one.
Thank you. So I was writing this letter in regards to Mr. Diolam's petition, special permit and variances, twenty-six eighteen highway. I'm a director butter to this property, approximately two-hundred-and-fifty-five feet on the east side of my property. I'm not in support of motor vehicle sales, motor vehicle service and towing business, which the owner has applied for. As mentioned before, the board denied the application on April twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, that was this year, for motor vehicle service. So, which I, bylaws, I thought they couldn't come back for ten, for two years. The applicant states he'll be working in conjunction with his father next door at twenty-six-twenty Cranbury Highway, who operates an unpermitted motor vehicle service since September of two thousand and four, as the commissioner has also stated. I put Exhibit B in there, those are the denial letters for twenty-six-twenty. One was done by Mr. One was done by Mr. Frady, and also Mr. Turner. Joshua has no regard for our zoning bylaws, he's been running his business for over two years without any approvals, continues to run it, he's thrown the bill to the commissioner of his property. He's also created a two-family there, without any approval. I know one of his tenants who's been living there for over 10 years, on the first floor, without any rental registration from the health department. I see other tenants on the second floor, they've been there for over a year now. He wants to turn a non-conforming residential garage to a commercial use. That is only 30 inches from my property line, which would require many variances, I think it's eight variances, it would intensify the non-conformity. I put in Exhibit C, which it actually shows the town map. And if you look at there, there's no factors relating to soil conditions, lot shape, or topography, that would create any substantial hardship for these variances. The shape of the property is no different from the rest of the lots in the area, there's nothing unique about that lot, no hardship. The owner purchased the property knowing the shape of the law. Also, Attorney Perry's letter to the board doesn't have the correct dimensions of the lot, the rear of the lot is 60.60 feet, not 26.7. The front of lot is 106.9, not 120.64. This is according to their site plan review that I looked at. Massachusetts General Law, 110, says that certificates of persons conducting businesses require anybody conducting business in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to file a certificate with the town clerk. There's no filing for 2618 or 2620 in the town clerk's office. Joshua DiOle is operating automotive sales, towing, and repair shop, he has posts on Facebook Marketplace selling parts off junk cars on the property. Approving this petition, the property will become an auto salvage yard, is already started. He's applying for a Class II license, when he's actually doing a Class III license. Section 1461, Board of Appeals, planning board shall not approve any application for a special permit unless it finds in judgment of all the following criteria. The use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood, used car lots do not any positive value to the neighborhood, it'll create more traffic to the neighborhood. The specific site is appropriate for, appropriate location for such use, structure or condition. This is not appropriate location for used car lot, mixed in with a residential building on the same lot. Number three, there'll be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. This business does create a nuisance, there would be hazardous to vehicles on Cranberry Highway entering and leaving, as Mr. Semple said, those cars with trailers always parked there, they go look at cars that he sells, and then pulls them in the driveway if they buy them or they don't buy them, they're always parked over on the street. There's a noise nuisance, a vacuuming cars all the time, this is 30 inches from my property, I hear that vacuum cleaner all the time, the shop back. Also spraying vehicles outside, you'll see Exhibit F, I have pictures of him spray painting a truck. Adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for proper operation for the proposed use. This does not have the adequate facilities. He cannot even pull a vehicle into the residential garage he wants to turn into a commercial use, there's no bathroom for employees in this building, and no sewer. The use or structure as proposed does not pose a substantial detriment to the town or neighborhood in which it's proposed, this is definitely a detriment to our neighborhood. Junk salvage, used car lots, they're not allowed actually within 500 feet. And number six, proposal as approved conforms to all other applicable provisions of the Wareham zoning bylaw. Like I mentioned before, he's created a two-family without a special permit, and no rental registration. I would ask the board to deny this permit, variance, site plan review. If you also look at, I think it is, I have pictures in Exhibit, I think it is E. Actually, the first one there, the 2006 Toyota Forerun Unlimited Sport Utility, listed for $1,200, it listed today. And seller's description is no key or title, parts will sell whole, messes me with interest. And I have a whole display of all of them, where he's selling parts off of all of these vehicles, so to me, it's not a Class II that he wants, it's a Class III, which is not allowed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Conti. All right. What's the tax bill say, how many units, one dwelling? What's your tax?
There's one dwelling, there's one dwelling.
On the general.
I'd like to know who Mr. Conti thinks a tenant is in a second dwelling within this building? There's one person, they've been there for years and years.
But that's his testimony, we're not gonna argue how he knows or not, this is something for the commissioner to find out. On the, on the general commercial. Residential use is.
It's not allowed.
It's not allowed at all, but it's an existing non-conformity.
Existing non-conformity.
No problem, no question, I understand, so definitely you can't make it two without a variance. So that's something the commissioner, we're gonna have to investigate and see if there's a tenant there. And having a dealer license or Class II license, I mean, that's, it's allowed use, it's gotta go through the process, unfortunately, Mr. Conti, it's gotta go through the process. And if he meets all the requirement, we have no choice. If the board feels not detrimental to the neighborhood, it's a special permit, it's not a variance, unless they ask for a variance, let's say for setback and stuff, that would be a different story, but it is an allowed use. That being said, that's where we are, and we can't really comment, I personally can't comment on anything until we see the real plan and the 53G and Alan Major's answer. But we definitely, I know there's a lot of violations been going there, and I'm sure a lot of residents not happy with that, which he doesn't have a permit for, your client, so I don't know how much that's gonna take effect, how much gonna make the board judgment impair it or not impair it, but we'll see what happens. That being said, anyone else wanna speak against this matter? I hear none. So my recommendation now, and the board could step in if they think otherwise, to go to site plan review. Okay? And in the meantime, Commissioner, if you could check on the second dwelling rental or these things, I don't know, if he's in violation. Now, if, before you go for, if you're in violation, you can't file, you can't come before us. So if you really have two units going on, and you allowed only one, I didn't see your tax bill, I don't see nothing, but we're just generally speaking, we can't hear your application without rectifying the problem. Commissioner?
Mr. Perry had submitted an affidavit from the owner stating that the house was being used as a single-family only.
Okay. I guess it's a single-family, if that's the statement.
You know, I could probably go further and get an affidavit from the tenant that he has, has the house.
Very well.
I didn't think of that until just now, because Mr. Turner asked me for an affidavit, and.
I don't know, Mr., I don't know how much, Mr. Conti, we have the power to prove otherwise.
I'm just saying, I live right next door, I see people going in there all the time.
I understand.
There's definitely somebody living upstairs.
Okay, yeah, that's, I understand, that's, that's still could be an assumption. Anyway, what do you think, Troy? Nothing?
No.
I think there's a lot happening, and there seems like there's a lot of issues. And Mr. Conti brought up the fact that there would be, I mean, according to him, that there would have to be like eight variances, I mean, if it's 30 inches from his property line, there would have to be definitely.
Well, that's why we go on site plan. You know, I'm sure Alan Major, we're gonna point these things out, so is his engineer, I don't see impervious area, pervious, whatever, all these things, all these things would come down, will trickle down before us with the site plan, and we'll see all this as it goes.
So I guess, I guess though, what, how do we handle looking at this and, as a salvage yard? Because I'm looking at these pictures in these posts, that definitely, taking parts off of cars and selling them is.
That's, the commissioner has to issue violation, not us.
Okay.
We can do nothing, I mean, he can bring it, he'll issue violation, he'll come before us, if he opposes it, we'll, we'll find in favor whoever, it gets recorded, it goes on that deed.
So, I guess that brings, then we go to the second comment, which would be, if he's in violation, can he go forward with this permit?
No. I don't think, when you're in violation, you can't apply for any permit, correct?
Correct.
Even building permit, anything, you have to rectify it. So, that's, that's a hurdle they have to pass with his engineer and his attorney, but the right direction right now is site plan review, 53G, and we go from there. Now, in the future, we're saying he's gonna run a junkyard, or he's gonna run a towing company, whatever, these are speculations. These conditions will be granted if the board grants the special permit for car sales and feel not so detrimental to the neighborhood for what brought before us, and, and a violation would happen, it will be cease and desist, and I'm sure the selectman would take his license away, right away, if he's operating a junkyard versus a Class II, if he's doing a Class III versus Class II. Towing goes without saying with a garage, so just so everybody knows, when you have a garage, towing comes with it. So you know. So, like I said, that's the only way we could go with it right now, rectify the issue if there is issue, and go for site plan. That clear? That good?
Yes.
All right, when you'd like to come before us again?
Greg? Paul's in your pack.
Push maybe for about a month out?
13th, September, December? Is that good?
You want the first or the second meeting in December? Oh, there is no second meeting? One meeting in December.
Oh, I'm in the wrong one, okay.
12:27.
That is one?
Two days after Christmas?
Yeah. Suck it up.
So, are we doing a 13th, 12th?
Let's see, what's good for you?
12:27.
You said there's one on the 27th?
Yeah, there's one, 27.
Let's do the 27th.
Okay. Can we get a motion, continue, 45 dash 23, 2613 Cranberry Highway till the 27th, December?
So moved.
We have a by motion by Rich, all of.
Second.
Second by Jim, all in favor, say aye, Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, I, we see on the 27th of December.
All right, thank you very much, folks.
During this time, Sam, you know, 53G, all these things.
Yep.
All of this good stuff, thank you. Before we call the other hearing, just give us a second, take some notes.
Still looking over DiOle?
No, the new one, better. The new one, I want the new one. Not DiOle.
All right, this is DiOle.
One second, one second.
Well, it could've been the folder. There is another one in here.
Site plan will be completely different.
Okay.
Mr. Conti's right, you have for Mr. Conti.
I got one of Mr. Conti's. You want that? Put another one in the folder.
All right.
You already handed your, out of the folder, the Perry package.
Counselor, you ready?
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
Forty, forty-four dash 23. Forty-four dash 23 Wareham Housing Authority, 57 Sandwich Road.
And you guys have already got the, on that one, correct? Kept him right up there.
Yeah.
This needs to be read in, correct?
Yes.
Forty-four, twenty-three, okay. Don't wanna read them wrong. On the zoning Board of Appeals, we'll hold a public hearing on November 8th, 2023, at 6:30 PM, in Room 320 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., 02571, to consider petition number 44 dash 23 for variances from the requirements of Article 3, Section 340.4, and Article 6, Table 620 and 621, under the Wareham zoning bylaws to Wareham Housing Authority, care of Jillian Morton Esquire, excuse me, of 184 Main Street, Wareham, Mass., proposing to construct two duplexes located at 57 Sandwich Road, Wareham, Mass., that appears on Assessor's Map 45, Lot 1015, in the MR30 zoning district.
Everyone, Counselor?
Attorney Jillian Morton, 184 Main Street, here for the Wareham Housing Authority.
Sam, I'm Ellie, J.C. Engineering.
So what you have in front of you is obviously for the Wareham Housing Authority located, their site located on Sandwich Road. This site, the WHA has owned this since the 1960s, should be familiar for you all, it has units for people who are elder, elder housing, disability, and what we're looking for is to have these two duplexes, which Sam can go through the plans. We did receive a denial letter, we're seeking two variances, and the two variances are for our lot area, as well as the size of the actual units. So, let's start with the, the size of the unit, so we need to have 650 square feet of livable floor, floor space, you guys understand that regulation, but our unit sizes are 527 of livable area. So, we have about 80% of the required area, I can have Sam kinda go into the why it is less, but I believe the gist of it is that, that the current units that are at Wareham Housing Authority don't meet the 650, if I'm correct, so.
The 650, I believe you have to have five plus unit to have the 650, Commissioner? I think you can under 650, it's only two, I'm pretty sure, no?
It says five or more family dwellings, so.
Five in the same building?
Yeah.
But this are duplex, you don't need 650.
Right.
So you need the variance.
Okay.
Commissioner, correct me.
I saw that today, and I agree, at the time, I was just thinking to get that out, so that.
Very good, thank you.
Okay. On to the next one.
Article 3 we can crush off.
All right, so, then the only variance we're, we're looking for is due to the lot area, so I mean, we're way off as far as the square, square footage on the lot, can read through the commissioner's letter. Now, Wareham Housing Authority, just to give you some background, is a quasi-governmental agency, right? It's not governed by town of Wareham, they don't report to them. It's the fact that any town can have a housing authority, if they vote that that's important to them, and it's actually, it's governed under a separate statute, which has, at least, can be governed by five members, and it's basically figuring out what's, what's best for the town redevelopment. Now, this actually receives CPC funds, so the town of Wareham voted to have an allotment of money to pay for this. Now, we're here, finally, to be able to put it into motion. So, it's clearly something that the town wants, and not detrimental to the neighborhood. The lot itself is kind of a pork chop, a pork, wow, I can't say, pork chop today, size lot, so has that shape, and I know that Sam can go into, when he was looking at different places to, to put the lot, this, this was adequate, it's access from the existing curb cut, Wareham Housing Authority, you can see from the plan, there's no other curb cuts on Sandwich Road, which is good to reduce any sort of traffic. And we're under, there wasn't a site plan necessary because we're also under the amount of parking spaces, so.
Yeah, but it's not its own park, it's not its own lot, is that its own lot?
So it's of the same lot. I wrestled with this one as well, but, I mean, I think it's clear that this is a separate area of the project. We're not redeveloping any others, and frankly, we go from the commissioner's letter. So he didn't indicate that it needed a site plan, so.
All right, very well. Go ahead, Sam.
Yeah, so as Jim said, it's gonna be four units, two duplexes. Given the lot, this was the most logical place to place the units. There won't be a curb cut onto Sandwich Road, as this would tie in off the current existing driveway. We are partially within the flood zone, we'll be going to Infront of Conservation next week, so they'll have a say over erosion control and drainage, but we did provide that on the plan as well. Six parking spaces were required for these two duplexes, and we've provided that as well. Other than that.
How many parking spaces you need?
We need six. They're one-bedroom units, so one point five per unit.
I did inquire from the housing authority, you know, how many of their renters have vehicles, right? I mean, he said it was less than fifty percent as well. So, that's just something to note there as well.
All right. Troy.
No questions at this time.
Veronica?
Oh, yeah, so, I'm looking at sheet two of four, the proposed layout. You said that it's not gonna be accessed from Sandwich Road?
It is, it's not a separate curb cut, so it's gonna use the existing access, which has this kind of median sign, right, where it says Wareham Housing Authority. So someone would come in the entrance, and then, I guess, take a left into that parking area.
And this whole project's on town sewer?
Yes, this has been allotted.
That's what I'm saying, it used to be private, and now it's been abandoned and.
Correct, yep.
Yeah. Like I said, it's an interesting one because it was granted through a town vote of CPC funds directed towards this for an article, so, but I understand, you know, why we had the denial regarding the lot density, but it's also something I tried to look into to see if it was covered by the housing laws, you know, forty-B that you always hear, because it is affordable, right? It's based upon what someone can pay in their market rate. But I didn't get anywhere with that, but that's why we're in front of you.
No questions at this time.
Sam, were you, you moving all that drainage north?
So as you see at the end of the six parking spaces, we have an infiltration trench at the end, which will, everything's pitched kind of down towards that trench, and that'll collect all the water there.
You thought this out conservation anyway. All right, very well. Anyone in the audience wanna speak in favor of this project? Yes, wanna come forward, please?
Can I ask a question?
Favor or against?
I just need a, I was just.
Question, first question.
All right, come forward before the lady, please, ask your question. Let you name an address, just a question. Name an address.
Markham Scott, sixteen Indian Neck Road, I'm the abutter.
What's your question?
I didn't get any of this in the mail, so I don't know what's going on over there.
Are you in abutter to the abutter? Are you a direct abutter?
Yes.
I'm sure the town mailed you something, you never get some in the mail?
I got something to come here, that's all I got.
Right, that's it.
I didn't get a plan.
You don't get those, you have to go online.
So I'm wondering where this, where is this gonna happen?
When is gonna happen?
Where on the lot are these buildings going?
All right, you could, you could take my side. Counselor, that's okay, Counselor. Take my, sir, wanna take this, get back in your seat, look at it, and next time you could go online, and you could check all these things out, or ask the planning department, they show you how to go online. Okay, you could have a seat, look at it.
Sir.
Under we have answers.
Excuse me? If you just go to the Wareham ZBA, and you go down, and you follow through, and you get to the part where it says projects, tap on project, and everything will come up, and you'll be able to see all that on there.
All right, ma'am, who's in favor, wanna come forward? State the name and address for the record.
I'm Susan McCombe, I'm at twenty-six Indian Neck Road. I am an abutter on the west side of my property to the housing authority, and I'm actually here with two hats on, I'm a property owner, but I'm also with the Wareham Land Trust, I'm on the board. And my property also abuts the Bryant Farm Conservation Area that is town-owned, and the Wareham Land Trust has the conservation restriction on it. So I understand that the Bryant Farm property abuts my property, and then there's another private owner that has some property. Then you have the housing authority that will be building out on Route Six. And I understand the need for expansion, and they've been great neighbors, and I don't have a problem with the project. I think I understand that they need to expand, and they've been really good neighbors, and actually helped me with some trees that were gonna fall on my house, and I brought it to their attention, and they took them down, and, and so.
They've been a good neighbor.
They've been a good neighbor.
Very good, thank you. Anyone else in favor? Anyone against, against this project? Yes, ma'am, wanna come forward? Sit down, state your name and address, and tell us what's your concerns.
Beth Ellis, sixty-two Sandwich Road, Wareham, Mass. So I live directly across from that vacant lot that's diagonal from the housing. So, I've been there twenty-one years, I'm totally for affordable housing, but I'm also worried about the increase in traffic. Since I've been there, we've had multiple, multiple accidents from Cherry Street to the low-income housing area, where my neighbor, their property has been plowed into, my property's been plowed into. And I thought that that lot across from me was conservation and wetland and non-buildable. I know my stepson owns property on the other side of that vacant lot, and I know he had issues where he had to make sure, he had to replenish shrubbery and stuff to protect the wetlands back there. So, I know there's a lot of wildlife and a lot of animals that are across the street as well. I mean, we have deer crossing there, turkeys crossing there, all kinds of things. So, my concern was mainly the traffic and the accidents. We have people that are living in low-income housing over there now, that they've come, walked across our property, through our property. My son used to own the garage next door, they would walk through his property and scope out things. You know, it's not obviously all of the residents, but it's a select few that we've had issues with.
Yeah. We can't really control people, and I understand these are senior housing, right?
Right, correct.
Maybe.
Is it senior and low-income? It's low-income housing, but is it strictly for elders?
So yes, it's elder housing.
It's only elder, I know, there's no young people. The only thing I could say, if somebody maybe walking your property, probably confused, or elder just walking.
We've had that too.
I know, I mean, they're older. You know, we go all getting older, I have my mother, she gets dementia, she don't know where she's going and coming. These are normal, and traffic, I wouldn't worry about it, that much traffic. Route Six used to be the major highway for Cape Cod. Adding these units, and most of the people, like the counsel said, most of them don't have cars. So I wouldn't worry about cars, about traffic, increasing traffic, that road can handle a lot of traffic.
You say that, but
I understand.
We've been faced with accident after accident after accident.
But the impact.
And when I'm driving down the road, just trying to turn on the street, the Cherry Street to my driveway, I've been almost hit multiple times, and with extra traffic, you know, coming out, or even if it's the bus stopping for those people who don't drive, you know, we've had issues there.
Right, what I'm trying to tell you, probably, yeah, people speed on Route Six and traffic or whatever, but the impact that this project, proposed project doing is very, very minimal, very minimal.
So when you're talking about the houses, they're just further down on that lot in the back?
Yeah, she show you next to you.
Right, I know this is where you go in and out. But that's mainly.
On Route Six.
Yeah, but that's all forest and wetland there.
We don't know that, that would be conservation decision, that's something, we have no jurisdiction.
Well, I just know because, I know with the issue, my son lives on the other side of that, and like I said, with the conservation, he said.
You're probably right, and when they go to conservation, believe me, if conservation feels so, and you be notified, they won't let them build it, that has nothing to do with us. If it's all wetland, trust me, they won't let them build it. Good?
Yep.
Sir, you wanna add something?
If you don't mind.
Sure, of course, come on. Just state your name again for the record.
Markham Scott, sixteen Indian Neck Road. Yeah, they've been great neighbors, what the first lady said, and I'm glad to have them for neighbors. I just didn't know what was going on, I just came here to ask some questions, and I think everything's good with me.
Believe me, you would rather have senior housing than.
Yeah, everybody over there's been great. It's awesome.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your comment. Anyone else against or in favor?
I would like to just say I know it's in your packets, but we did also have the council on aging. And I've also spoken to the town administrator about this too. I mean, when we're looking at the housing, and this is just for the public's information, we're talking like thousands on the Wareham housing, you know, on the list.
Eight fifty.
Yeah, yeah, so, we really, I think the vote from the town said it all, so we're very appreciative to be able to have this for the town.
All right, very well.
So, so we've got two variances.
One variance.
Oh, besides, besides, we eliminated the so, it's the.
Lot size.
Lot size, the density. That's it, that's all we gotta consider. Okay. Make a motion to close the public portion of this hearing.
I have a motion to close by Jim, I have a second.
Second.
Second by Troy, all in favor say aye, Troy.
Aye.
Veronica.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, aye, closed, nazi.
I move that we go ahead and grant the request for a variance.
We have a motion to grant the variance, standard condition findings, meet sec, uh, meet sec, uh, chapter MGL forty-eight, section ten, based on that, we have a motion to grant, I have a second on that.
Second.
Second by Troy, all in favor say aye, Troy.
Aye.
Veronica.
I'm sorry, I brought it on grant.
On the variance.
On the variance?
To grant the variance.
You got a stink bug on you.
Hello?
I'm gonna abstain.
You're gonna abstain?
Yes.
Okay, Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And aye, it carries, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Five, I mean, four, zero, one.
Four, zero, one.
Right Veronica. All right, very well, it carries. Forty-six dash twenty-three Brett Bussier, special permit slash variance, thirteen Tarpon Way, Tarpon Way.
Tarpon, that's Little Hammer Estates.
Hello, guys, have a seat, hi Brett. Just give us a minute, take some notes, and read it for the record.
Is that the right time, or did that clock not get turned back?
It's nine fourteen.
It's not, it's not ten thirty, it's eleven thirty.
It does feel it.
Did you give me the folder from the last one yet? I'm gonna be a very slow reader because Mr. Sample needed to stretch his legs.
So I'll make a comment about that clock, that clock makes me late.
It makes you sleepy?
No, 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 your weight all over.
No, I'm late according to that, because the chairman looks over and he goes, oh, it's six-thirty, and he starts reading it in. And it's really six-twenty-six?
He told me you're on.
Yeah, we.
He says when we're on.
Said we on live, that's mean it's six-thirty, this is wrong. This is way wrong.
Yes. Just so you know, it's really only nine. Nine fifteen.
All right.
Nine fifteen. Nine fifteen, I always wondered what it was like this late at night.
I don't think you always wondered.
What's that?
I don't think it was always a wonder.
No, no, it was not, there was a time in my life when at nine fifteen, I was just getting started, as a matter of fact.
Me too.
So, the real fun didn't start till about ten, after we arrived and had been there for a couple of wobbly pups. So, I don't think we need Richard in the room for me to read this in.
No.
The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on November eighth, twenty-twenty-three, at six-thirty PM in room three-twenty of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, forty-eight Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., zero-two-five-seven-one, to consider petition number forty-six dash twenty-three for a special permit or a variance from the requirements of Article Six, Table six-twenty and six-twenty-one, and Article thirteen, Section thirteen fifty-two, and Section thirteen fifty-three, under the Wareham zoning bylaws to Brett Bussier, care of Brad Bertolo, J.C. Engineering, Inc., twenty-eight fifty-four Cranberry Highway, Wareham, Mass., proposing to construct a second floor above the existing home, new doors, windows, and a sixteen-foot by twenty-four-foot addition located at thirteen Tarpon Way, Wareham, Mass. That appears on Assessor's Map thirty, lot forty-five, in the R sixty zoning district.
Okay, very well. Name for the record, or?
Sam I. Melly, J.C. Engineering.
Sorry, name for the record.
Sam I. Melly, J.C. Engineering.
Brett Bussier, Peter Cooper Drive, Wareham.
And you're the builder, Brett?
Yes.
All right.
So, this is thirteen Tarpon Way, we have an existing one-story, single-family dwelling. At the time this dwelling was constructed, the zoning setbacks were twenty off the front, ten off the side, ten off the rear. Currently, the house sits approximately forty feet off the front property line. Under today's zoning setbacks, we need to maintain sixty feet. The applicant would like to construct a second-story addition over the existing first-floor footprint there, as well as a single-story addition on the right-hand side with a farmer's porch in front of that. So we'd be seeking a special permit, as long as you don't find this any more detrimental to the neighborhood. The proposed alterations would not be any closer to the front property line than what currently exists today. Side and rear setbacks will be maintained. Looking at the area, both abutters to our left and right have second-story living space as well, and the use of the property is not gonna change in any way, it'll remain a single-family, remain a three-bedroom, so no increase in traffic or noise or anything like that.
Okay, very well, very routine application. You guys, like Mr. Sam said, if we don't find it so detrimental, we'll act on it as a special permit. Start by Troy.
I have no questions.
Veronica?
I'm, I don't see it as an issue.
Gonna take a sow's ear and make a silk purse out of it. Good job.
I drove by, took a look at the situation in the neighborhood, doesn't look like it's gonna do anything different to it than what it is, so.
No, it looks like it's a good project to me.
I'm okay with it. Anyone in the public wanna speak against? I'm sorry, in favor, you're right. You beat me to it, in favor. In favor, yes, yes, ma'am.
Kristy LeGuey, eight Tarpon Way, I'm in a butter to an abutter, I suppose. I guess my main concern was to just be reassured that it remained single-family, and that the structure would not go beyond what it has now, it's in the small addition, so I think it would be a nice addition to the neighborhood.
Very good, thank you, ma'am.
And they're very good neighbors so far.
Thank you very much.
Your parents, I assume?
No, no, I just, I just swear for them.
Oh, okay, all right.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, you're welcome.
Anyone else on Zoom, in favor or against? I hear none, you wanna add anything before we close? Can we get a motion?
I move to close the hearing, the public portion of the hearing.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Rich, all in favor say aye, Troy.
Aye.
Veronica.
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, nazi, aye, closed.
Make a motion to approve as proposed. Make a motion to approve as, as proposed on a plan dated July fourteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Alright, do you wanna see, give a relief from a variance or special permit, or you want grant as variance?
I, I think we can do it as a special permit.
Okay, so motion, I'm being, uh, motion by Jim to treat it as special permit, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Rich, all in favor, say aye, Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye, it's special permit, now he wishes.
Grant.
We have motion to grant standard condition, not substantially detrimental to neighborhood. Do I have a motion, uh, a second on that?
Second.
Second by Troy, all in favor, say aye, Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Myself, Nazir, aye, carries, thank you, five zero zero.
Were you too easy?
The easiest one.
Too easy.
If it was too easy.
Come back in here, sit down, deny.
You should have been first, so you didn't have to go through all.
I saw everybody before me, I'm, I'm grateful.
You sat through everything else, it looked so painful, didn't that look too easy to you?
Boy, I bet you wish it was the first one, huh?
Get a motion to adjourn, I'm beat.
So moved.
Second. Second.
So, motion, do I have a second for the motion?
Second.
Second by Rich, all in favor, say aye, Troy? Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Thank you.
Just.
Good night.
Well, we supposed to be, I thought we were supposed to be meeting about some of the rules and stuff that.
I think we set a date to do that.
Yeah, so I'm just wondering if we're all gonna be available for that, or?
Yes, 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 sit down, sit back.
Are we reopening this?
Reopening, yes.
To reopen.
Motion to reopen, we, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Rich, all in favor to reopen the public hearing, say aye, Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Go to me last.
Aye.
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, I reopened. Uh, on the matter of discussing the rules on regulation with the special, uh, rules on regulation that Mr. Buckland put out.
Was there something about, is it the thirteenth?
It's, it's set for a certain date, I think it's set.
I think we gotta confirm that, right?
The board voted, um, at the last meeting for me to advertise and set a public hearing date for the thirteenth.
By the thirteenth?
On the thirteenth, for, it's set for the thirteenth.
Public hearing is set for December thirteenth.
Okay, so this, let's, okay, can we have motion on Sonia's motion?
Who's Sonia's motion?
So moved.
Yeah, okay.
So, so we have a motion, so motion by.
We already, we already did this. We told, last meeting, we did this.
Well, I was just asking if we're all, making sure that we're all gonna be there, that's all.
Ah.
Is anybody not gonna be there, is anybody traveling, or?
December thirteenth, uh, why are we open, oh, just general questions? Alright, motion to adjourn again.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Jim, do I have a second?
Second.